Okay, well, I guess let's go ahead and get started on pre-meeting. What do we, what do we have for pre? Rick, so a couple of things, but I know that was pretty much the biggest thing.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that that was the biggest thing. And so now we have a forum, but I just wanted you guys to be aware and mark your calendar for July 26. At the beginning of the meeting, we'll do a short little tribute to Jack Howe. I'm sure all of you are aware that we've lost him this last month. And it happened just right as he was preparing to come to a planning commission. So he's just amazing. He's done so many great things in his life and, you know, he's served the community up until he was almost 90 years old on the being on the planning commission for, you know, the last portion of his life. And so we're just going to do a short little tribute. We got that the commemorative clock order for him and then we've reached out to some of his family. They will be here. And so anyways, I want you to mark your calendars for that. And then other item that I wanted to visit with you guys.
Rick, a couple of things.
Yes.
So all of that probably wasn't recorded about the reason why we're changing the agenda.
I can explain that right now.
We want to do that.
Explain that at the beginning of the meeting as well.
Okay.
We close that door also.
Or even maybe, maybe we ask them to come back so they can get more clarification since they're here.
Okay, so just a point of clarification. Items two and three. What had happened was we ended up putting in a geologic file on the the site and apparently overloaded the site and on the state site, it showed that it was canceled. Which we've never seen happen before, but it was brought to our attention. And so we went in and posted it that it wasn't canceled within the 24 hour posting of that. But then I visited with legal today and I just said, hey, you know, as far as transparency goes, it looks like the meeting was canceled and we have a fairly big item on here on Osprey, even though it's not a public hearing item. You know, should we look at, you know, canceling those items and legal had indicated, no, it meets the requirements for the county code. We met everything that we need to. And he and Corbin mentioned that it's up to the planning director to decide whether or not we hear that item or if we don't. So I reached out to the applicants and and got their take on it. And then I also reached out to the chair and Trevor and talked to him about it. And and then I reached out to a few other folks in the county and they were fine with us putting it off until the July 26th meeting. So the two items won't be heard until that time. And so we'll send out notices again for the the public hearing, which was dealing with the Powder Mountain item. And then we'll put John Lewis's item back on there with Osprey.
So to clarify, so just reiterating you, we had an issue with the public notification where the notification that the that everybody can see, giving people time to notice what's going on. Something, one of the areas stated that it was canceled. And and in order to make sure everyone is aware and we're not trying to hide something, we are postponing so that it is all all out. We're not going to, we're not trying to say, hey, don't come because it's canceled. Surprised we're still doing it, even though it's legal to do. We would have been legal because we did it within 24 hours. We're giving plenty of notice is what we're trying to do. So thank you. I think that's, that's, I think it's right. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, sure. The other item on here that I'd like to talk a little bit about is dealing with short term rentals and how they are enforced and how things are happening from the code enforcement side of things. In the last meeting I wasn't at, but I heard that there was some concerns about what is the code enforcement department doing on short term rentals? And is anything being done? And I can, and I reported to you previously before that time that there is a lot of stuff that's being done with short term rentals as far as code enforcement goes. And so we have some information here for you. It's not public information, but it's information for you to see what's going on. The reason why we don't make this public at this point is because we have some ongoing cases. And when people do become aware of what's going on, they can either target their neighbors because of that, when they're not even guilty of that. Or they, you know, they may affect the case when they find out that they are short term rentals and they start hiding information from us. And so it becomes hard for us to enforce those type of things. So we want to be a little selective on how we do that. And so it's not information we want out there, but we wanted to show you the planning commission that there is a lot of stuff that's going on with short term rentals. And so what I've done is I invited Iris, our code enforcement officer, to explain what's happening with this. We have five minutes on this. And then what I'd like to do is request that on the agenda that we move the planning director report to the beginning of the meeting so that I can talk a little bit about this and then ask Iris to talk a little bit about this as well at that time. So Iris, would you mind coming up? And what we have here is we have on the one side, the areas that we are working on, the zones, and then the information that's happening on on those. So.
Thanks, Iris.
Good evening, commissioners. They don't often come up here, so.
Well, thank you for coming.
An interesting experience for me. So our illegal nightly rentals, we have lots of them in the values, as you will know. And some of them, we've been able to catch by, they want business licenses because they want it. Because they they want the the things that business owners can get by having having these. And they want it for their write offs and taxes and different things. And so we've caught a few that way. And obviously we decline them. We tell them that it's not in an area that they can do it. Or if it, if it requires a conditional use permit, then we turn it over to the planners. And I know that recently you've had one or two of those come through and your books, as it were. And other times they go to long term rentals as opposed to short term rentals. And or they'll go to Ben Breckford, which still needs a CUP. But so some things are happening that way. Other things are happening and I've got a few on this list that we do. We send a notice out and we have to wait till the post office brings brings back a nice little green card to tell us that yes, the address was good. And yes, that they received it, that they picked up their notification or that they declined it. But if the address is still good, then we can move forward. And sometimes I get phone calls and I get people on the phone saying, I'm not doing nightly rentals. It's just my friends. It's just my relatives that are coming up spending the weekend. And I know in one case that I'm looking at and the property owner actually has a written notice that he leads that for his nightly renters, in case I come knocking on the door to tell them that they're just a friend or they're just a relative. And I do take, I do take photographs of the plates. I do look to find information that way. I rely heavily on the neighbors and most neighbors are just really, really good to send me to say, oh, they were up this weekend. And I've given out my cell number and they'll, they'll call me and say they're up here right now. And even if it's on a weekend, I come toling by and knock on the door and talk to the renters and to see what's going on. But usually I send that first notice. If there's no change and I send a second notice notifying them that we're going to start finding them. And there is one on here that is in the thousands at the moment and we're getting ready to take that person to court because they've been ignoring. Sometimes people will say that their neighbors are targeting them. And that's why, that's what this is happening. So I have to be very careful about what they're doing. But mostly I send the notices, I sent two notices. And we start the fine system. And if they're not paying the fines, which very few, if any, ever do, then we take them to court and we get our fines that way. And we took one gentleman to court a little while ago last year. And he ended up, it's a class B misdemeanor plus plus a fine from the courts. And unfortunately, the courts keep that fine. We don't ever get to see that. But if if they're doing nightly rentals and they can do it with a CUP, I let them know. And if they're, if I do it and they say, oh, I'm just, these are just my friends and relatives, I do try and find out if they are mostly Airbnb, nightly rentals, they come on the weekends. I don't work weekends, but I do make that effort. If a neighbor is reaching out to me and they send me several emails, I do come on that weekend, on the weekends and take pictures of those plates and run the plates. And even if they're, if the neighbor tells me, excuse me, even if the owner tells me that they're just renting to friends and relatives, I'll ask, oh, where's your friend from? And if they can't tell me, then that's a problem.
Thank you so much for what you do. You have a very difficult responsibility. We very much appreciate what you do. Thank you.
But it's frustrating. And it's mostly so for the neighbors because they see it every weekend or they see it. And they're the ones that are there for when the noise occurs. They're the ones there. There's trash buckets that fall and trash comes everywhere. But their neighbors clean up after nightly rentals. That's not the neighbor's job. And so it's frustrating for them. It's frustrating for me. We have a system and it takes a while. This system does. I have to make 100% sure that they are nightly rentals. I went to one and talked to a lady and it actually was a friend. She was, her father passed away. Her half brother had let her use the home. And she was staying there for a few days because after the will was read, she wanted to go in the house and clean up her father's house. She didn't want to stay there. You know, so there are things like that where there's genuine stuff that's going on, but there's also a lot that isn't, you know, but and I can't tell any property owner that they're favoring to me. I have to make sure. And sometimes that's a long process. And as I say, I do sincerely apologize to all the neighbors that I'm not able to write a citation out and, you know, like UHP also can.
You're following the laws, which is what we want to see. And I, looking at this list, it looks like there's a lot of things that you've got going on and things that you are doing to help enforce the the codes that we have on the books. And we, we very much appreciate that. It looks like that a lot is going on. And and that you're working hard. So thank you. One point of clarification, I don't know if I should ask now we're in the meeting. I just want to make sure that there was a gal that called that came in in the last meeting. And she had, it was in Elk Ridge. And are we, we're working on that area as well. Is that correct? It's on here. Okay, perfect. And thank you. Thank you. So it is being worked. I can see every one of these that that we've seen here. There's definite progress happening. Several of them are fined. Most of them are things like that. And so you can definitely see that there, that it's it's being being addressed. So, so thank you. Thank you. Okay, Rick is, or Director Grover. Is that everything for the pre-meeting? Okay. With that, I'll call the the meeting of the Ogden Valley Planning Commission to order. If the audience would please ride and join, rise and join me with the pledge of allegiance. So for everybody who, well, let's see, we have, we have a couple of things going. Let's start with a roll call. We are, we're missing a couple of members. Please indicate that Commissioner Commissioner Howe is excused. Very sorry to hear about that. As we had recently passed. Unfortunately. Here will, he'll be great in this. President. Commissioner Torman is excused and Commissioner Johnson. Excuse as well. So Commissioner Francis, Mr. Schuman, Commissioner Burton, Commissioner Montgomery are all in attendance. Commissioners, we're considering the approval of meeting minutes dated April 6, 2022. Let the record, there have not been any submitted corrections, therefore the minutes are approved as submitted. So moving to the agenda. Changes which we've, we've been discussing in the pre-meeting. Items number two and number three on the agenda, which are for preliminary approval of Osprey Ranch subdivision request for a preliminary approval. And a public legislative item, which is a public hearing to consider and take action on an amendment to the development agreement at Powder Mountain. Both of those items have been rescheduled due to a announcement error. We had a a second, a place on the state website where all of the documents are uploaded. And it kicked back because of the size of the the file. The, the, the meeting was canceled. And so in order to better communicate with the the community to make it, we didn't want anything saying, hey, this is canceled, trying to, we want as much public input as possible, you know, people to know about it. We Director Grover reached out to the applicants and they, everyone has agreed to postpone so that the public has as much notice as possible. So with that, those two items will be off the agenda. We're going to move the remarksman planning commissioners to the top of the list and we'll go there. Rick?
So as far as directors comments, just a couple of things. We have noticed that with our Zoom meeting, that it's really imperative that you speak into the mics. Because people on Zoom can't hear things that well. I'm looking and working with our commission office of actually getting an owl, not an actual owl, but in here so that we can get some better audio for our public that's on Zoom. So if you could, just make sure that you speak into the mics when you are speaking until we get a resolution to that. So next item is in our pre-meeting, we had Iris, who's our code enforcement officer. We have two code enforcement officers. Iris Henin and Alan Coleman. And in the last meeting, there was some questions about what is being done from the code enforcement side at the county with short term rentals. So what we've done is we've provided you some information on what has been done as far as code enforcement goes with short term rentals. And I've asked our code enforcement officer here to the meeting to just kind of step you through exactly what is being done with short term rentals. And how the county is enforcing short term rentals that's happening right now. So without further ado, I've asked Iris Henin to come up and go through that.
Could, could. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners.
I think we can hear you now.
Okay, good. So, and as I said before in the pre-meeting, first of all, what we do is a lot of times we do rely on the neighbors. They'll call, email, or say something's going on. And then we have to verify that we feel like something is going on as well. So we'll usually go by on a Friday afternoon. If we don't see something, then usually on a Saturday, I'll come back and see if there is something, if there is something going on, there's a lot of activity. There's a lot of vehicles, especially out of town vehicles, especially vehicles that have been in different states and areas that way. That's a way of letting tell, you know, of notifying us that maybe there is a short term rental. I will then send a notice to the property owner. And I have to go by the records that are in our our tax records to where to send the tax notices. And that's where I get that information for where the property owner is at. Once I sent them a notice, I have to wait for the post office to send me a little green card back that says, yes, it was a good address. And yes, it was picked up by the property owner. Or no, it's bad address or no, or the property owner declined to pick it up. And a lot of times people think if they don't pick up a certified piece of mail, that they're off the hook. That is not the case. That just means that they know that I know something's going on. It usually confirms more than than not. And I then wait, have to wait a space of time. And if they do it again, I just start gathering the evidence. If the neighbors are able to take pictures without compromising themselves and their safety, I ask them to go ahead and take pictures. If they can't, I ask them just to notify me that there, that there is some activity at the house and nightly activity. And then especially on the weekend, I'll come out, I'll knock on the door, I'll talk to the renters and try and ascertain if they're renting it or if they're, if they're family or friends. And as I indicated before, there was one gentleman that had a script for his nightly renters. For when I knock on the door and to say, no, that they're just family and friends, that's okay. So I gather my evidence and then if they still haven't either contacted me or it's continuing, I send the second notice. And that's the fine notice. That puts them on notice that every time that they have nightly renters, we'll find them. And until it stops, and when it stops then and they start to come into compliance, then that's, they still have to pay that fine. Or they can petition the director to see if that, if that fine can be knocked down a little bit. But as yet, Rick hasn't ever gotten a petition from any of these homeowners to knock down the fine a little bit. If they're still doing it and we still have, and we get that evidence and we gather that evidence and they're being diligent about it and we can prove, and and that, that's the thing, we have to prove. And in in these cases, that we have to prove that that they are nightly renters, that they're not the visitors, you know, the relatives and stuff. Then we get a court date and we take them to court. When we take them to court, if they're found guilty, they are found guilty of a class B misdemeanor. And they're also given a fine by the court. Unfortunately, that fine, we're not able to collect because the court collects it and it becomes the court's fine. And and so that's how we do it. But sometimes it takes a while. And I know that it's frustrating. I know that that people are trying, trying to circumvent it. There's ways that people circumvent it. And it's actually online. It's actually, you can Google it. If you make a contract with your Airbnb renters and they say they're going to rent it for 30 days, even though they only rented for three days, they can legally get away with renting that for three days. And but then they can't rent it out again for the next month. And some do do that. We've had that in the past. And that's a way that some people circumvent it. And that, and and that because they've got a legal contract that these people are going to be renting it for 30 days, three months, six months. And then they've chosen to break it after three days or four days. And we, we can't go after them. We have to start it all over again. And unfortunately, there are loopholes and there are loopholes that the Airbnb and VRBO, they, they want to keep their business. And so they very jealously guard some of the techniques that some people can use to, to, to do these. I do send notices. Sometimes I've sent out to four or five notices because somebody said, oh, I've been sick. I need some help. I need a timeline. I can't get this off Airbnb because they're not letting me take it off. So it's going to take a couple of months. And I do know, because I did have communication with VRBO once, that they said sometimes it's difficult to take the calendars off immediately. Sometimes it just has to run the contract, even though they're not getting anybody to rent those spaces. So, and it's frustrating. And I think nightly rentals is one of the most frustrating pieces of things that we do as code enforcement. Because of everything that we have to look out for and look for.
Well, thank you for coming. It sounds like, like you're, you're following the law and trying to trying to to catch those that are trying to squirt the law, which end the code and everything. And doing everything that we can to do that the right way, which does not involve just shotgun blasting everybody that has has a problem. We're trying to make sure that it's a real issue. Do it the right way. Appreciate that very much.
And we know it's frustrating. We know it's frustrating for the public. And for the neighbors because they buy these lovely homes and they don't want the transient elements coming in. Because when people do rent, they rent to have a good time, to have a party. They have family and friends or whatever, and the reason they rent these places. And so, you know, it's hard all the way around for everyone, especially in this economy. Well, thank you for your time.
Commissioner or Director Grover, are you all right if we have some comments or questions?
And I'll be glad to answer some too.
Now, when you do find a violation and you start the process, do you communicate then with the treasurer's office to notify them in case they're not aware that it's not a primary residence? Do you have?
Yes, we go up and we say, okay, these are, these are, these are, we believe are not primary residences. I can't say categorically, but I let them know, I'm looking at this for an Airbnb. I'm looking at this one for a nightly rental. And then they can send notices as well. Saying if you're, if you're not a full time residence, this is your second home, we will text you appropriately.
That's a great question. Thank you.
I have a question on the fines. So when you send a letter saying pay us a fine, how much is the fine?
$100 a day.
Okay.
Sorry, how much? $100 a day.
Okay. But if they refuse to pay that fine, say it's for 10 days, now we're up to $1,000. And then this goes into court. Then the court will keep the $1,000.
What happens is the, because it's a class B misdemeanor, the, the court will wipe out that fine. And the, the court will wipe out that fine and then just find him as a class B. Because that's the law and that's what the, the court can do.
So the class B is a criminal offense.
It is.
And so the fines stay with the court.
Absolutely.
I guess this could be pursued as a civil offense and then the fine would stay with the county. Those are some things we are looking at with the new ordinance that is on hold right now. So, and also, as you know, the fines are much heftier than a hundred dollars a day because that really doesn't get their attention. So the fines are a lot more with some of the proposals that we have brought before you.
But to point of clarification, you said, so we heard that the fine is a hundred dollars a day. And then you said there are a lot more. Is that what we're trying to get done is that there are more? Is that what?
That's what we're proposing is that they will be more. We're also looking at with the short term rentals is using a third-party company. To help with the enforcement. And with that, we're able to use more information on the website to help with that. Whereas state regulations restrict what we can use on the site. We're initiating things. One of the things that I'm really grateful for the citizens coming to this last meeting is. The more we can get information out there that they need to contact the county and let us know about these things. That's great because Iris, excuse me, Iris and Alan, they're trying to get. You know, these things under control, but without being aware of that. But without being aware of those things, we can't go off the state sites and initiate that. And also too, one thing that's important for those who are online or those who are here at the meeting. Is that when they do send, thank you, when they do send a complaint. And they think that nothing's happening on that. The important thing is for them to keep following up with Iris on those things. Because there are certain times where Iris, as she mentioned, she will contact them and they'll indicate, oh, it was family that was there at the time. But if we know of another time when that happens, they go back out and then they follow up. And they'll find out that it's not family either by tracking license plates or contacting them. But we have to have that hard evidence to get them in court. But hopefully we try to settle before it gets to court.
Obviously, I can't call out every weekend because, you know, have family too. But having said that, there are some people that, that email me that are so good and so conscientious. And I wish we could pay them too because it, it helps us a lot. And then if you go quiet, I think I'm being effective when I'm really not. And, but I don't know that because you're not emailing me that someone was here this weekend or that weekend. And if I have two or three neighbors that are emailing me and all three of you stop. Then I really think I'm doing an okay job and I, I stopped somebody where maybe I haven't. And they're, they just feel like nothing's being done, even though something is being done. It's complicated.
So with the current laws that we have, which is what we're, so, so the, the, we heard some disturbing things in the last meeting. And I appreciate them bringing that to us so we can at least ask the question, which is really what it is, is hey, are we working on this? And it, it sounds to me like we really are working within the bounds of the current laws and code that we have. That's not to say that the code or the, the rules can't be changed to be better, but that's, this is not the place for that. This is not, as far as I'm aware, this is not.
Well, it, it is the place because it starts with the planning commission and we have started it. But we have things put on pause until it's, you know, until we get direction otherwise.
Yes.
Then we'll start working on that.
So, so we, we've started, hopefully we can continue that process, I guess. And I guess if there's, if there's continued to be issues, let's continue to reach out and, and let the county know. I know it's, it's an uphill battle to, in, in everywhere. So, but it's all, it's a good thing. We want to make sure that, that those that are trying to do the right thing aren't being penalized for the wrong reasons. And, and those that are doing the wrong thing are being penalized. So.
And, and you know, this, this is our community. And we want to make sure that the community is served to the best of our ability. That's why I come to work every day. And so, and if I'm not doing my job, then I need to hear about it and. Director Grover definitely needs to hear about it. So.
Thank you. We do appreciate the hard work that you do. It's very difficult.
Just one more clarification. I think there's been confusion about a state law that says you can't go online. And see an advertisement and file a complaint based on seeing an advertisement online.
I can't go troll it. So I can't go to VRBO and I can't start clicking and saying, oh, there's a night rent. Oh, there's a night, I can't do that.
But if you get neighbors complaining, then you can.
Then I can go back and take a look.
You can go on VRBO and say, they're advertising this for a nightly rental and now it's admissible. Is that correct?
That is correct.
But the, that's partially correct. That's right. We did ask counsel to look into this a little bit.
It's, I'm pulling it up right now.
But thank you, Iris. I don't know if I can say that enough. It's a very, you're in a very difficult spot, I know. And we very much appreciate the work that you put in.
There is nothing that prohibits the county from going to those websites, looking at what's on there. And noticing them and starting the process of taking action against them. Anybody in the county, Iris, Rick, any of the planning staff, anybody could do that. If that's how they want to start trying to enforce this. Or they could hire a third-party company to do that or a, a web service or whatever they want. But what cannot be done is. Prohibit the act of listing on a short-term rental website. If the ordinance that we have only prohibits listing. Or offering a short-term rental on a short-term rental website, that violates state law. Also, if we were to use an ordinance that prohibits the act of renting. A short-term rental. Okay, let me stop there and clarify. It's okay to have an ordinance that prohibits renting. A short-term rental as distinguished from just listing it or offering it. If we say you cannot have short-term rentals in this zone, that's okay. But we cannot use that ordinance to fine, charge prosecutor, otherwise punish an individual. Solely for the act of listing or offering a short-term rental on a short-term rental website. And the discussion last time, I think, got to this point, which is. If all we have is evidence that they listed their property on a short-term rental website. That is insufficient because then we would just be punishing them for listing their property on a short-term rental website. And that violates state law. We need additional evidence. And that was the discussion that was held last time. So Iris is free to go onto VRBO or any website, find all the properties advertised in Weaver County. And then she has the list, but we cannot use that as the sole basis for issuing a fine. We have to have some kind of evidence, whether it's a neighbor corroborating it. Or whether it's observation of what's actually going on there, whether it's Iris interviewing the people. Something beyond just the listing.
Now, as a point of clarification, I'm remembering this from the last meeting. You had this meet. At Cortland, you had this meeting and discussed all of this with everybody. So they're all aware of what, everybody's up to speed with this. Is that?
We didn't have the meeting yet. We, we talked about that. I was gone most of last week.
Okay.
Out of the office, but that was, I think, something that was going to happen and will still happen at planning's invitation to me. So.
Chair.
So, Commissioner.
Can we lien their property?
Will you speak in the mic, please? Sorry.
If we have all the evidence, can you lien the property and make sure we can't sell until they pay those fines?
That's a good question. I know that in our enforcement, when we get to the point of issuing those fines. The, the ordinance, I, I pulled it up here to look at. It says. If a property owner or occupant fails to pay a fine issued under this section. The county may take reasonable steps to collect the fine, including. Petitioning the applicable court for a judgment against the owner or occupant in the amount of the unpaid fine. And once that has happened, if a judicial order has been obtained under this section. Then there can be a judgment lien recorded against the property. And if that happens, that would be based on judgment lien law, which I would presume. I'm not an expert in that. I've dealt with it a little bit in the past, but it's been a long time. But a judgment lien would have the effect of flagging that property and they'd be required to pay that, I believe, before it would be able to be transferred.
I'm following up on that.
Or at least we'd be in first, first priority position or something like that.
So, and there's a significant discount for full-time residents, residents on property taxes. It was mentioned, you know, it was asked already if that was how we deal with that. Does this happen frequently? Or, I mean, what evidence is needed to do that? My, my thoughts on this is that that should, I don't know where the, where we stand on the code. And I guess that's part of my question is, are we pushing to ensure that that is happening first? So it's like, hey, we have proof that this has been happening for a while. Can, are we, you know, what's point does that happen? Because that's something I would imagine the county can do fairly easily. Is that accurate?
So for violations, if it's a proven violation and they haven't paid, we can do what we call is a red tag. Inspection uses it all the time. We use it if there's no land use permits. That have been issued or, or red tags. So that's a red flag. And that's, that's recorded against the property. So if they try to get a loan. If they try to sell their property, that red flag will pop up and say that there is a verifiable violation. On, on that. And then we can proceed that way. And I haven't done that with the fines on the nightly rentals, but I have done it for other violations. When, when there is a.
Other violations like building permits, things like that?
Building permits and, and, and no, there's properties with no. They put sheds on their properties and they don't have a land use permit. If they decide to build something without the appropriate building permits for, or haven't had inspections. Then, then both the inspections division and I, we can put what's called as a red flag, a red tag on there. And that notifies everybody that there is an issue. And then when, when they come and they want to get a loan or to sell their property, that red flag shows. And there is an issue and they'll call us and say, can you take this red, this red tag off, this red flag off? And if we can, we do. If we can't, we have to say, well, it's, it's on there because there isn't a land use permit. Or it's on there because they built an extension to the house without any permits. And, and that has to be rectified first before we can take those tags off. And, and that's how, how we do those.
And then at what level does it amplify to going from discounted property taxes to full payment?
When, I, I'll go upstairs with my little list to the assessor's office. And I'll say, now this property, this property and this property I'm looking at. I've had communications with the neighbors. They've sent me things that indicate that there is a nightly rental going on there. And then the assessors take it from that. And they will contact them and say that their taxes are going up because it's a second home until they can prove it.
Do we know if that's ever been done yet? Or we'd have to ask the assessor's office.
I know, I know several homes that, that, that it's not necessarily nightly rentals. But for other things that that's been done.
So as a resident that's having this problem, you know, if I have a neighbor and I'm concerned about nightly rentals. Is that something I can speak to the assessor over? Are they, now they're in elected office. And so they, it's fair to say I should be able to approach them and say, hey, I've got this problem. Will you? Is that something we can direct them to also, you know, as, if you have a problem with that. Reach out to the assessor's office as well and make sure that they're taxing them at the right amount to, to help discourage it.
I work with the treasurer's office. Right now, we have an area of concern. In the Huntsville area and I'm working, I work with them. Because, because of what's going, taking place in this area of concern. And we have a task force and that includes the health department, sheriff's department. Inspections, assessors' office and the treasurer's office. And we've all come together and we're working on this area of concern. And so we do communicate with each other in different departments and we do talk about things. And if I, like I found a property that has an accessory dwelling on it. And which has not been taxed as an accessory dwelling. Even though it was before, but when it changed hands, for whatever reason, it stopped being assessed. And so went over to the assessor's office, talked to them about it, showed them my evidence. And they are now taxing that property appropriately. So.
Well, thank you. I know that we've, we've kept you here a lot later. So thank you for staying. We appreciate the comments. Is there any other questions, commissioners for Iris or Rick at this time?
There was some discussion last meeting about citizens gathering evidence and sending it in.
By, by emails and photographs, yes.
Photographs and talking to. About talking with guests. And they're saying, yeah, we're just here to have a party.
Yep. And that's all relevant. And I get those emails and then they put them with their, in, with their cases. Yes. But when, when we do go to court, because we don't want neighborhood strife, I'm the one that's complaining. I'm, and I show the evidence. And so we try to keep the neighbors out of it. Unless they absolutely want to testify in court and the attorneys think it's appropriate.
Thank you.
So, so neighbors can gather evidence that's helpful to you. They should be careful. We don't want strife.
I, I had a neighbor that was. Wanting to help me and kind of went over the line. Went on to that property and actually into the house to get some information. And I can't use any of that. Don't use any.
From, on the county perspective, we do keep the neighbors anonymous. And we, we try to respect that, that people are trying to help the county do the enforcement that needs to be done. But we will not compromise their. Who, who brings the information?
No, I'm, I'm the complainant. And, and we've always done that when we get to court. Even if a defense attorney asks, it's always, I'm.
Great.
Thank you, Iris.
You're welcome.
If, if we have one more minute, I would, we have a public comment. And I see Val, Valerie Fowler has her hand up, but I want, before we get into that. I want to make it known that we won't hear any specifics of anything. If there's a comment or question that is positive, we will, we'll go ahead and hear that. If it's not, we'll, we'll cut it off. So no specifics, because we, we think, I think the process has been well laid out. We have a list here that shows that there's a lot of things being done. That's, some of it's confidential and it can't be shared. So I don't, I don't think that it's going to be necessary. We don't need to get into specifics. But if there is a question from, from members of the public, I think it would be appropriate for us to have, have that answered. If you agree legally, is that, that okay? Okay. With that, Valerie. Okay. With that, Valerie Fowler, let's, go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I just have, I wasn't aware this was on the agenda. I am delighted it's on the agenda. It is a big issue for many of us. So thank you for spending the time today. I have two quick questions for you based on the, what you've told us so far. The first is you mentioned looking at third-party enforcement. That was last raised more than a year ago. So I think the members of the valley would appreciate an update on how that, how that process is coming along. And secondly, Commissioner, you said this process is on pause until directed, you tell you receive direction otherwise. And so my second question is, from whom is that direction awaited? I, I, i.e. who's told you to put it on pause? Because my recollection was that originally it was on pause because of the concern about misinformation, which of course is best addressed with more information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think to clarify, Rick, I think if I could hear, heard her correctly, she's talking about when you said that, that, that we, we propose, the planning commission proposed a plan to the county commission of ways to help deal with the short-term rentals. And you had mentioned that that's, that, the, the whole item is on pause.
Correct. So the county commission, they wanted to get some requests on proposals on what it would cost for third-party rentals, uh, third-party to enforce those type of things. And so they wanted that information before it came back before them. And because of the workload that was happening with the West Weaver general plan, those type of things, put that on hold until we get that resolved before we take it back to the county commission. So.
So if I can add to that, your, the solicitations are not something that is, can happen overnight. That takes, it takes a good two, three, two months probably worth of work to do something like that.
Yeah.
And with the workload that you had, getting that out, it's, it's on the list.
And just for your information, the public's information, Western Weaver general plan, we're hoping to have that finished sometime in August. Is what we're shooting towards right now. And then we can start looking at these things more in depth. We can start looking at the old Newtown village plan more in depth. So, but right now we're split. We don't have so much staff.
Okay. Did we get, she had another question? She had third-party enforcement and update on that.
That's kind of the same question. Yeah.
Well, um, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I, I guess the, my, my question about third-party enforcement was, it was more than a year ago. I think it was February of 2021 that the commission very kindly laid out a plan moving forward that anticipated having a bid out by February of 2022, so a few months back, followed up by selection of a third-party enforcement company by this June, aiming to have that enforcement underway this summer. I certainly appreciate that all this takes time and staffing. But given that we're now about, oh, 16 months into the timeline, maybe the West Weaver general plan has been that 16 months. But I would plead on behalf of the, of the Ogden Valley residents that the commission be very forthcoming about reasons for delays or timeline changes that had been very carefully laid out in the past. And then when everything went on pause, so did, it seems to me, just from my personal perspective, it seems to me so did communication with the community. That, that has happened to me personally in engaging with Rick and Iris, but I know it, just in generally speaking with a lot of different neighbors, there's a lot of confusion about what timeline is really out there. So perhaps you all could do a letter to the Ogden Valley News or something that explains what you anticipate the timeline to be so that you're proactively providing information rather than letting either overcome information that's over, been overtaken by events still remain forefront of mind for the residents or misinformation from folks with vested interests having that take hold. So I guess I'm pleading for proactive information provided by the commission. Thank you.
You bet, Valerie. The timeline's been consistent with the county commission. The Western Weaver general plan that gets taken care of. And unfortunately, there's a lot of folks out in Western Weaver that are frustrated with the timeline because that timeline was scheduled for the January, that's been pushed to March, that's been pushed to June, that's been pushed to July, and now it's been pushed to August. And so we're trying to make sure that we get that taken care of. And so once that's taken care of, then we'll start looking at the short-term rentals. We're start, we'll start looking at older Newtown Eden and those type of things. So. Unfortunately, because of staff doing a lot of the work on the Western Weaver general plan, whereas the Ogden Valley, you were fortunate that the county commissioners were able to put up a little bit more money in the Ogden Valley to help with the general plan. So that we had a consultant that helped with a lot of that. Right now our staff is doing the majority of the writing and the work on the Western Weaver general plan, which is taking countless hours. And so because of that, that's put a pause on a few things. And we have to prioritize what's the most important in the Western Weaver general plan, folks. They've been without an updated general plan since early two, it was 23, 2003. So the Ogden Valley folks, you have an updated general plan that was done in 2016 or 17. So that's what we're trying to work on 16. Thank you. That we're trying to work on right now for the.
So I, I, what I hear is that you're working on it and I appreciate that. So thank you, Rick, for, for working on that. And I, if I heard Ms. Fowler correctly, she's, she's asking for communication. I think that's, that's fair. That we, we look for, for an updated timeline. And I think that what I'm hearing is sometime around August, we anticipate getting it out. And maybe two months from there possibly is kind of what we're hearing, but we can't put a time to it because of the kind of the nature of the beast that we're at with staffing shortage and things is. So appreciate the, 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 trying to, to put a, to, to help us understand every, there, every, everything's important. You know, and we can't get everything done all at once, but thank you for trying.
I would love to put a timeline out there, but I'm hesitant because the Western Weaver general plan has changed, you know, from January now till August. And so it, it, you know, if I put something out there, then, you know, and they change the August date to a later date. You know, I just, that's where I hate to play.
And, and also looking at this list, it looks like we are doing quite a bit about this. You know, what you've shared with us is it looks like there's some pretty serious things that are happening. So even, even though we're looking at changing the laws, it seems like what we have currently, although it's not perfect, we're, we're trying to enforce it. And it's just, it's, it's frustrating because it's, seems slow. But, but that's, that's, it's something that is, is good on both sides. We have, have the innocent or those that, that aren't trying to do anything wrong that we don't want to penalize for no reason and those that are doing the wrong that we do want to catch. We're, we're doing our homework to make sure that's right. That, that's visible here. So thank you. And I, I think that, that kind of helps address the issue.
Any idea how many licenses are active now for short-term rentals in the valley? Iris, do you have, we can get back with you. Like 30?
So if we didn't catch that online, she said about 33 active licenses is what we're thinking. And we, we, we encourage those that, that can or in the right to, to come and get, to come and apply for license. The right thing to do is if you're going to do it, do it the right way. Okay. We have a, a hand here in the audience, Jan Fulmer.
I do, yes. For the record, my name is Jan Fulmer. I live up in Ogden Valley. I've been known by other names, but you can just call me Jan. What I would like to do is just bring up two concerns before your commission, please. And I want to read them to make sure I'm as expedient as possible. Before I do read these though, can I just say, my heart's out to Iris, Iris, I would never want your job for anything in the world. And also to all the worker bees and John Ullaberry's office, the assessor's office. I know how hard those people work. It is amazing. And I cannot fault them for anything, especially these two guys here. They have been absolutely wonderful to work with. So now can my three minutes start? Okay. First concern is TDRs. TDRs, as noted in the Ogden Valley general plan, which was approved by Weber County Commissioners in 2016. TDRs were meant to be used to transfer development rights from large.
Sorry to cut you off. And I wouldn't, can we start just not to, I just want to make sure that we're getting the right thing. I don't want to keep Iris here a lot longer than she has to be. So if you have a short-term rental specific code, can we address that first? And then we can cover the other items. I just want to make sure, because if, if she's, I don't want to keep her longer than we have to, is all.
All right.
Not, I want to hear everything you have to say. I just want to get that part done and then we'll move to the next part. Okay?
Start over at three minutes. All right. So my second concern was just some facts on short-term rentals. Okay. I'm not knocking anybody here. All right. But we've done a lot of research up in the valley ourselves and we have gone to different communities. All right. For almost 18 months, okay, we've been waiting for the commissioners to give a priority to this. And there's a lot of other things that have had a more important priority. But the Weber County Assessor's Office, I've been working with John Ullaberry, cannot generate, generate a report on how many dwelling units in Weber County are in areas allowed to provide short-term rentals. Can't do it. The assessor's office can produce reports on the types of dwelling units like single-family condo, townhome, cabin, et cetera. And also they can indicate if it's a primary or secondary residence. But he cannot generate a report that said, these are all the dwelling units in area zone that allow short-term rentals. Okay. Fact number one. I'm providing each of you with the spreadsheet that itemizes legal dwelling units in Ogden Valley communities that are actively being used for short-term rentals. There's more than a thousand. And I validated everything on this spreadsheet myself. We had a team of people that went around to the different communities. These are just the legal ones. It doesn't include the number of lockout units that are there. You know what a lockout unit is, right? It doesn't include those. As of the end of March, based on the response from a grammar request I submitted, there were only 32 licenses in all of Weber County for short-term rentals. And these thousand units are definitely actively being used because I've talked to the management companies. I'm also providing you with an article on short-term rentals that was in the Ogden Valley News and it was also recently published in the Standard Examiner. Last week as a matter of fact. Please also keep in mind that is noted in the STR article, one of our county commissioners indicated on April 19th, 2021, that the intent of the county's STR ordinance work was not to expand STRs, but rather to enforce them. I do have a copy of that video recording of this work session if you want it for any reason, because it's not posted up on YouTube. Please keep this in mind because it is highly anticipated that requests are going to come in to rezone land to allow more multifamily dwelling units to be used at STRs. That is clearly expanding STRs in the valley. And we know those requests are going to be coming. Okay. That's all I have on STRs. So you can tell Iris, you can go home.
Do you, let, let's, so is there any questions or that we have for Iris? That's, that's what I'd like to get to.
Karen also has something she would like to add on STRs. Okay. But I do have a second concern I'd like to give you not related to STRs. So would you like, Karen, to?
I, I hear these, we hear these concerns. I want to know if we have questions for Iris. That's really what I'd like to know.
No, no questions for Iris.
Okay. Then if you would like to stay Iris, I think we're, we're okay. If you'd like to go, that's fine too. Whatever you decide. That's up to you, Rick. Sorry. I don't need to.
No, that's up to Iris. Yeah. You, you can go Iris. Thank you for your time. So appreciated.
Thank you.
That's not all. That's not all of them. Oh, if I find more.
Okay.
All right. Now, the other concern I would like to mention is on TDRs, which is transfer of development rights. And they were noted in the Ogden Valley general plan, which was approved by the Weber County Commissioners back in 2016. In that plan, TDRs were meant to be used to transfer development rights from large parcels of vacant or agricultural land to clustered village areas. Okay. Transfer those development rights, maintain open space, but still give the owner of that property the monetary value, you know, that's worth for those development rents. They were not meant to be used to transfer development rights from a clustered or a village area to another clustered or village area. The primary objective was to preserve as much open space as possible and to ensure there was sustainable growth in Ogden Valley by observing the total build-out projections. That is in that plan. Use of TDRs, especially in Ogden Valley, has already been eroded. After the Ogden Valley general plan was accepted and approved, the concept of bonus development units for developers was added to the plan behind closed doors by the Weber County Commissioners in 2019 with absolutely no input from the community. Granting bonus development units can easily exceed the total build-out projections of the valley. And now more than ever with the issues of water, we have really got to watch that. So please, we know your ability is only to recommend, but please recommend as strongly as possible. Please. And that's all I have. And these are copies.
Okay. So for the comments. We, Rick, do you have any comments?
No.
We have another comment here. We state your name and where you're from.
My name's Karen Bartholomew and I live up in the Elkhorn HOA. And it does not allow the single, the short-term rentals based on the zoning of R15. It's also not PRUD approved for STRs. But what I would like to discuss with you briefly is what it's like to live next to these things. I know that you've heard everybody griping about STRs and there's a reason. You get things like cars on both sides and this happens on our street that we look directly onto. Cars on both sides of the street, sometimes as many as 12 at a time and a big toy holder, baller. There's no way that if we needed to get any kind of a fire truck or anything down through there, that they would be able to fit. Also, they, we've had runnings of dirt bikes up and down the street with no licenses on them, but lots and lots of noise. And trespassing on properties where bicycles go up and down driveways. And there's one particular driveway that's just, it's a nice snake curve. And I mean, it, it could be a real problem if someone were to get hurt because it is a difficult driveway. We've also had three-wheelers riding in the side yards of people that don't, don't belong to this STR business. And then we've also had some of the renters who have been kind of menacing the neighbors when we were trying to film what they were. when we were trying to film what they were doing, you know, with just holding up a camera. And that was just a really tense-type situation. And finally, we've had something new this year, public urination. Guy came out of the house, unzipped and let it fly. And it was like, I mean, I, I didn't even think to get my camera. I had never seen anything to that degree before. But it's, that's what we're dealing with when you have these STRs in your neighborhood. And they shouldn't even be there according to the rules. So that does make it a little tough to swallow at times, this type of behavior. And also that same house, I don't know if it was the same owners, but three or four years ago, they were running a used car business out of the house. And we finally called the sheriff on that after we'd taken pictures of multiple license plates of cars that had come through and they detail them in the street and then they rev them up in the driveway. Then they get them all spiffed up and then they disappear and then a next one comes. And that happened over the space of probably four or five months in a row. So I don't know, like I said, if it was the same owners or not. But that's what summer is like when you've got these STRs. And I, I try to firmly believe these people would not act like this in their own house. But they come up into the valley and do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for the comments. It's a definitely frustrating, frustrating scenario, issue that we all, we all deal with. Sorry, sorry. Sorry that we have to. Here, here we, Commissioner Burton, you have a comment?
I just wanted a clarification on this list of over a thousand. These are places where short-term rentals are allowed.
Yes, yes. There, there, there are plenty of places for short-term rentals. If I might also add, if you're familiar with the Moose Hollow and Cascade, all those condos that are there, they, they have an onsite management company where a lot of the rentals, they would manage those rentals. But then when, with Airbnb and VRBO, they lost a lot of that business, because people are just doing it directly now. But those were, oh, and that does not include the forty-eight condos that are being built between the tenth and the eleventh fairway on the Wolf Creek Golf Course. And the sign that's up for those, like buy them now, you know, before they're gone. The sign that's, that advertises, it said, zone for nightly rentals. It's a selling point.
Okay, so this list is to illustrate that there are lots of short-term rentals allowed by current zoning.
Absolutely. And also, one of the Weber County Commissioners reiterated that the intention of the ordinance was not to expand the areas for short-term rentals, but to enforce it.
Okay.
And boy, we're going to hold that, hold that line.
And your comment is there are places where they're not allowed in the valley, where they take place and compete with these places where they are allowed.
Absolutely, absolutely. It happened in our neighborhood and it was very unpleasant, because I and a neighbor had to have a face-to-face with the realtor who was doing it.
Okay.
And that was no fun.
I, I suppose another issue is we have thirty-two licenses that you've found. Would these be required to have licenses?
Yeah, if they're in an area that allows for it, they need to go through the process and we can check it out.
Which, so like Wolf Creek, is it like, do they have a group license for multiple, or is it?
There, there's areas that are-
Have to be individual.
It has to be individual. Typically, what happens is there's zones that they're allowed in or PRUDs. They may have allowed them as part of the PRUD. So those are areas that they would be allowed to occur in. Some of them, if they're in a zone area, typically you have to get a conditional use permit for them. And that's why you've seen some of those come before you just recently to get the conditional use permit. When the PRUD is done, the PRUD is done under a conditional use permit. And so they include that as part of their approvals. They're basically getting the condition.
Commissioners, the one article that I gave you, it clearly spells out based on approval from Rick Grover, where short-term rentals are allowed in Weber County. Okay.
Thank you for clarifying for the question. I was, I thought she said these were a thousand units that were not approved. So the comment is that there's a thousand, roughly a thousand areas where it can be done, but there's only thirty-three licenses. That's, that's what we're getting at.
That is correct.
Okay.
So it sounds like I've made a little matrix here. If the zoning allows, yes, you got to have a license. If it doesn't allow, you got to cease and desist. That's the initial break. Now, things like Compass Rose Inn, that's Huntsville, they would issue a business license, like a hotel.
But that would be for Huntsville. Yeah, they'd have to, however they handle these, they follow these rules.
And Lakeside Village condos, they've been doing this forever, but they would individually have to have a license for every unit.
Yeah, and for instance, a unit that is wanting to rent out their individual area, they have to get a conditional use for that. Because we have to look at parking for that and how it's working. And then the business license would be issued for that specific unit and location.
Thanks for clarifying.
We have a question. So would you reiterate also the funding, the funds that are not coming in because people are going to get a license? For instance, how much is the license? And is that, we have to be renewed annually? How does that work? What, what, what kind of revenue are we even losing?
Business licenses, we're not really losing that much on licensing. I think it's like seventy-five bucks for the business license.
Times a thousand.
Yeah, I mean, that's up, but you know, not everyone is applying for short-term rentals of those thousand people. It's just like with ADUs, we have thousands of residents who could take advantage of ADUs. And we've only had maybe one or two that have came in and actually gotten an ADU. So not everyone's going to want to do ADUs, which we've found. Not everyone's going to want to do short-term rentals. However, I know there are more people doing short-term rentals legally than ADUs that we can see. And so that's why we're looking at the short-term rental work intervention.
Then is that, does it have to be renewed annually, or how does that work?
The business license?
For short-term, or yes?
Yeah.
And it's the same amount every year?
I believe so, yeah.
So this list that you provided us is a portion of the overall list that you have for illegal nightly rentals?
No, these are ones that we're working on finding right now that have been reported.
Yes, so it's not all of them that you're looking at?
No, this is.
Oh, this is just the find?
These are all the ones that have been reported to us that we're working on.
Okay.
So once we, and that's why we encourage people to call us, tell us, you know, where those are at. Give us evidence and then we can start pursuing that.
Okay. Well, it sounds like it'd be great if we, if everybody that is doing it would come and apply for a business license. And then that would be better. Okay. So with that, let's move to, we covered the Planning Director Report. Are there any remarks from Planning Commissioners?
I do have one. So when we meet and talk about the number three, that was three-point-one ZDA Powder Mountain, is there any way we could get some clarification on the specifics of what the specific changes are that we're looking at?
Those are actually in your packet right now, if you want to read through them, if you'd like.
I cruised that, but I didn't see anywhere. Maybe I just didn't look hard enough then.
So-
I couldn't have, it snow hasn't spelled, I didn't see that we're anywhere where it was spelled out.
It, it's not a major change that they're doing to that. They're trying to, you know how Snow Basin came before you? And in that, in a certain area, they wanted a little bit more leeway to develop things, so they didn't have to come back before you all the time when they're doing certain things. That's similar to what Powder Mountain's requesting. They're wanting a little bit more of a bubble diagram concept versus the specificities that were once in a Snow Basin Development Agreement and are currently in the Powder Mountain Development Agreement. So they're just looking at a little bit more leeway as far as coming back every time and amending something when they did that make sense?
Yeah, I did, and I did see reference to that, but I didn't know if there were any other specifics, you know, things from, from the, from the regional.
No, there's not a lot. Steve was going to go through that with you in his presentation, but that's pretty much the gist of what they're wanting. It's nothing major. It's just a few, kind of giving them a little bit more leeway like you did with Snow Basin.
Thank you.
Any other comments by Planning Commissioners? We'll go to remarks from Legal Counsel, Courtland.
The only question I had was on number four, public comment for items not on the agenda. I don't know if you asked if anybody else had any public comments, maybe online.
Yeah.
I don't have anything else.
Let's go ahead and do that. We, we did kind of overlap public comment and the short-term rentals, didn't we? Any, any remarks by the, from the public that's for items not on the agenda? I see one.
I'm Jim Warup. I live at nineteen-seventy North Big Sky Drive. And I'm president of the Big Sky Estates, number two Landowners Association. And now I find that meetings have been postponed. Comments? Below us. Can you tell me when it's rescheduled to?
Yes, that is rescheduled, we believe for July twenty-sixth. So we covered this. What, what happened is, is the, the size of the packet is, is rather large, double-sided, and it includes geological studies and some pretty big data, data items. And when it was posted to the state website, it, some reason had an error. And it, it, so in some cases, when you went to look for the, the, whether or not we were having the meeting, it showed that it was canceled. And so because it showed that it was canceled, Director Grover reached out to the applicant and said, hey, even though it's legally okay for us to go ahead and have the meeting, because we had twenty-four hours notice still, once we fixed the problem. He, we wanted to, we felt it appropriate to give the community more notice that these items were coming and postponed to July twenty-sixth. If it, in it, if it does come before that, it will be noticed at least a week in advance.
Okay. Can I make a small comment?
Yeah.
Regarding that?
Well, it's items not on the agenda. How was that fall, Courtland?
I, I'd say it's up to you. If you choose to allow it, it's fine.
Okay, yeah, that's all.
It was my understanding, I heard from other people, that the previous meeting, there was this discussion about using our road as a means of egress. And I just want to state what our association feels have road. And that is that we are fine with the idea of emergency egress for fire and what have you. But our road is privately maintained and there's no way we could entertain a constant stream of traffic through there without somehow turning it over to the county or whatever. But we've been told a number of times that it's not a possibility to be a financial burden. We couldn't possibly do it.
So there's two roads. There's one that's the emergency and Big Sky is not the emergency that we're looking at. So we, we had-
Two of them that come on to Big Sky. We're accommodating two different subdivisions.
Okay.
With water line at the moment.
Yes.
They're providing water to-
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Sure, thank you. Good enough. Yeah, there are two different subdivisions that we're currently providing water to. One of them is the Hidden Creek or Hidden Brook and the other is Osprey Ranch, which the water line is going down our road at the moment. It's being upgraded to an eight-inch line. Both of them are, my understanding, going to be, have fire crash gates.
So I can clarify that, the discussion that was had. So the one, I believe, at Big Sky Drive, the, the one that goes all the way up, the, the discussion was had because in the, from the planning perspective of, for future use, it was clear that the, that they did not want it to be an access road. But the discussion was had, should we ask for a right-of-way and not build a road? Just the, I believe it's right-of-way easement or something like that to be put in the subdivision? That if in the future, the Big Sky Drive were to become county responsibility, we could have better connectivity, and that was the discussion. So it was, it was not that we were requiring it to become a crash gate. Or we were just, the discussion was that we would, that we would like to see some kind of right-of-way in the, in the future, you know, maybe, you know, could be ten, could be twenty, could be never happening. That if the county, if the residents of Big Sky Drive or, or some other reason it needed to be connected, it was a possibility. And that was the discussion.
I see. Well, as it is, we'd like to state that we don't want anything other than emergency egress. And we can understand that. I have a number of fires in the area that have been threatening. I've even gone so far as to have architectural drawings done for, to add onto my house to make a bug-out area, an underground place where if fire came through, I could just dive underneath. So it's, it's, it's a big concern, fire. And now I'm particularly think that we're going to have all these fire hydrants down below us. And now an eight-inch line to accommodate all that. So the fire prevention and the fire egress, we can see that to make it a regular means of, of back and forth, there's just no way at this time that we can accommodate that. Right now, the road has been put in on private funds and what have you, and we're constantly trying to maintain that road. And and now with this new water line going in, it's completely dug up. And I've worked with Shane Dunleavy and others to make sure that it's going to be returned to its original state. So we can get a fire engine or what have you into our houses that are already there.
But- So that was a work session where they asked for kind of comments, like basically input. The proposal, when it does come, is something that I would encourage you to, to, to see. Because we, I, I don't know what it is, and I guess it's in here, but I know they were going to bring that specific topic up.
Yeah, and it may not be fair to go into too much depth on this with the applicant not being here.
Right.
It might be good, you know, to make your comments for the record and then, you know, that can be relayed to the applicant and addressed at the July twenty-sixth meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there any other comments from the public for items not on the agenda? Okay. With that, we'll adjourn to a work session. Work session item number one is discussion regarding new state requirements for moderate-income housing plans and implementation strategies.
Right, Commissioners, my understanding is the workout, the breakout room behind us is occupied with order machines. So- So um, we'll proceed in the chambers, if that's okay. Have a couple items I'll pass out just to facilitate discussion. Sometimes it's hard when we're looking at screens. Okay. More. Some of the text is a little bit small, so we'll pass it out as well. Share my screen, so we're seeing everything on the screen that you see there in your hands, but. What this item is about is moderate income housing. This is a topic that the commission. Uh, worked through back in twenty nineteen, so some of you may, this may be your first introduction to this topic. Brought up by the state legislature. So in twenty nineteen, the legislature passed SB thirty-four. And that particular bill um aimed to address moderate income housing and the shortage that we're, we're seeing statewide. Now, that particular bill. Both person details here, just to bring everybody up to speed as to. Why we're talking about this in the first place. So in your um, your packet here. SB thirty-four passed in twenty nineteen. Required the county to adopt moderate income housing as an element in our gen, in our general plan, if we didn't already have an element. So the Ogden Valley's general plan was passed in twenty sixteen, had some information about demographics and housing and. It did not specifically address moderate income housing. So the state legislature in twenty nineteen said, you need to address this topic and it needs to be an element in the general plan. If you don't have it, you need to add it. Gave us a deadline, December first of twenty nineteen to do so. Uh, moderate income housing was defined at that time and continues to be defined as housing occupied or reserved for occupancy by households of a gross household income. Of equal to or less than eighty percent of the median gross income for households of the same size in the county. This is a countywide median income. Um, and so it also, this, this bill required us to add this element into the general plan, and it also added reporting requirements where the county had to report annually. Uh, moderate income housing needs, um, sort of demand and also supply to tell them how far off we are from providing. That to be updated on a annual basis and stuff. And uh, this bill was tied to some compliance, and if we did not comply, we would not be eligible for transportation funding. TIF, the Transportation Investment Fund, or the Transit Transportation Investment Funds, or TTA. So basically, I said, you need to do this, otherwise you're not eligible for funding. So we went ahead and did that, and we started by putting together some existing conditions back in twenty nineteen. And I won't bore you with the details, but it basically said we don't have enough, um, moderate income housing between twenty nineteen and now, twenty twenty-two. That is, uh, obviously, and we got worse with housing prices increasing rapidly and incomes not keeping up with those housing prices. So back in twenty nineteen, for example, the countywide area median income was sixty-two thousand and change. Eighty percent of that was forty-nine thousand and change. If we were to say, you know, what is affordable to a household, earning eighty percent of the M R, that would be a mortgage payment or rental payment of about eleven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So it doesn't buy much nowadays. So in twenty nineteen, we put together some of this, some conditions, some demographics, you know, we put together some goals, policies, and objectives. And so we added an analysis into that general plan, put some goals together, and we ensured that we were in compliance with that, uh, that bill. The bill gave us a menu of options to select from, implementation strategies that we could elect to use in our plans. It gave us twenty-four menu options, we had to select at least three. To be in compliance and make sure that was part of our general. Um, in, in summary, those three items that we chose to tackle. Were to address short-term rental compliance and how it was kicking away for moderate income housing. And to create more clustered style development and increase density in village areas and PRUDs. To, to increase density in the village areas, create PRUDs or cluster ordinances to allow for smaller lot sizes. And not, obviously, ups and downs, but to allow for more density in certain areas. And to address ADUs, accessory dwelling units, the state provided provisions for us to allow free use. Adopted meaning ordinance, um, and then also to work with the housing authority to try to maintain our existing housing stock. To find new units that were needing repairs, needing to be kept, upkept, so that they wouldn't fall into disrepair. Those were kind of the strategies that we chose to go with, and as, as was written into our general plan as our strategy to, to go forward. There's any questions so far?
Say, did you say, try and find houses that are in disrepair that need repair?
Our strategy was to work with the housing authority, if we can identify homes that need to be repaired, to work with them to make sure they didn't fall into disrepair. So we maintain the existing housing stock and that that housing stock not turn into unlivable situations. There's a strategy to say, let's keep what we got in good shape and work with housing authorities so we don't lose any housing stock. Disrepair or. The bad landlords and those types of things. Makes sense? So let's not lose what we have, is essentially one of the goals that we selected. Makes sense?
So what, what we, what is the, what is it that you would work, do on that? So we've got a guy that's gonna take care of his house, we're gonna give him money to fix it.
The housing authority actually has a fund, um, set aside, it was funded by a grant, and if, for example, there was a homeowner who just couldn't maintain their property, didn't have the funds to do so. They could request funding through that program, receive funding, maintain their, their property, and you would keep it from going into disrepair. That was one strategy.
Perhaps his question is, you're making the connection of how that helps.
It was an option that was available to us through this Senate bill as a strategy, and it was something that was mostly in place to the existing Weber Housing Authority. So the goal, if you read it in detail, says, we'll support the housing authority in this role that they already have, and that they're already acting on. Uh, that was, you know, a way for the county to see, if this is something that kind of already exists, let's make sure that it continues to function. So I want to just be superficial, that was back in twenty nineteen, we updated our general plan, and we started working on those rules and objectives, okay? If you look at your big piece of paper, this is where, um, I'll give you a little bit more of an update on where we're at on this. So this is page five of the packet, or the big page that I handed to you, it's more of a blown up copy, if you want to read something, it's a little bit more familiar on the eyebrows. Okay, so I mentioned four strategies that we had chosen to use. Um, and if you read through the general plan, you take one goal, three principles, and eleven implementation strategies to tackle these four topics. Okay, so we kind of write, write them out in eleven different implementation strategies. Now, this matrix that you see before you is um, a, a status. Um, this is something that Charlie actually provided to the commission a couple of months back. He looked at the entire general plan, this is more specific on moderate income housing, that component of moderate income housing. So this may be a little bit familiar, I doubt you went into this one too, Kell. But what it basically is showing is, we've got moderate income, moderate income implementation, and then you'll see it's one point one-two, one point three-four, one point three-three. And they're not, they're not in order numerically. What we did is we, we added a priority to them on the left-hand side, where we took these implementation strategies and said, which one do you want to tackle first? Um, so the priority on the left, where it says priority two point one on this first line item. That was a priority that was given to this implementation strategy in consideration of all the other strategies in the general plan. Remember, we have strategies for transportation, for parks, for land use, all sorts of things. So when you see on the far left side of this priority, it, it's, take that in context with the entire general plan, okay? I pulled out all of the moderate income. Housing implementation strategies, just put them in a line. So we've got eleven of them that are specific. And we've, we've done some work on several of them, we have some work to do on others, but um. I guess the moral of the story that I'm trying to convey here is, these strategies are listed out, we're working on them. And um, they're in various levels of provision.
Question?
Yeah, go ahead.
There's eleven, but I'm, are they combined?
I'm sorry, no, they're eleven, you're right. I, I erroneously said eleven, it's ten, it's what, what's on the list here. Okay. So we will kind of revert back to this page a little bit, but I wanted to just give you a quick synopsis of what has happened since twenty nineteen and then today, okay? This last, um, this last legislation and session passed another bill, it's HB four sixty-two.
From this progress to date of the M Y H plan. This is a snippet of the, the bigger group of things that he showed us, but this is all of the moderate income.
So just specifically, yep, to moderate income housing.
There's only these ten, there's not like fifteen, and you just picked the ten?
Correct, on this topic, yeah, there's, the, the general plan has lots of goals, objectives, implementation strategies, these are just moderate income houses.
These are all of the ones that are listed.
Just, just consolidated under one page, just so we can look at them in a brief synopsis. So take everything that we've just talked about, kind of put it to the side, that was in twenty nineteen. Fast forward to twenty twenty-two, the legislature has passed another bill. Um, to further clarify and amend the twenty nineteen requirements, okay? So this uh HB four sixty-two, it modifies and expands the moderate income housing plan implementation menu items. So as you recall, in twenty nineteen, we had twenty-three items we could select from, we had to get at least three, that was the minimum. We selected about four. Now, they've kind of revised these, they've made the language a little bit more um, specific. Um, they're, they're kind of ratcheting down on this topic to say, in nineteen, let's get a plan together. Twenty-two, let's be a little bit more specific about the timeline and how you're gonna actually make these things come to fruition. So it's kind of an iterative approach that the legislature is taking to get us to plan for moderate income housing and implement moderate income housing. Right, so this bill expands our options. Um, it, the, the biggest takeaway from this bill is that we have to add a timeline and specific benchmarks for each of the strategies that we choose. So it's not good enough now just to say we have a goal to address moderate income housing in these ways. We now have to say we are gonna do so by taking these steps in this specific timeline. And so they want us to be more detailed about how we're actually gonna go about bringing this to fruition. Does that make sense? They've given us a deadline of October first of twenty twenty-two to make these adjustments or any adjustments necessary to our moderate income housing portion of the general plan. Our reporting is still annually, but they did change our due date to October first as opposed to December first. So they're pushing it up a little bit in the year so that we have time to get everybody's updates, review everybody's updates and make sure that we're compliant. If we're not compliant, they give us an opportunity to come here. They're just trying to get ahead of it a little bit earlier in the year. And. Um, compliance is still tied to transportation funding, so that's not changed. But they did add an incentive where if we choose these three from a menu. And select two more, so if we choose at least five. And then we will have what they're calling priority consideration for transportation funding. Basically, it kicks our applications to the top of the list or near the top of the list if we're competing with other jurisdictions or any of those. Okay.
Question, can you tie in the, tie for us with transportation to affordable housing?
Yep, so they are wanting to make sure, and you'll see, if you read through this massive bill and get through the minutia, that they're tying funding to transportation. Because they want to see transportation tied to housing. The state wants to direct funding to where transportation can serve housing, especially at a moderate income level. Families that are making eighty percent or less than the M R typically are needing more options and opportunities to give into transit or to have transportation to. Services, jobs, and those types of things, they're more reliant on public transportation and transit. Or in an unincorporated county, we don't have a transit district, we don't have transit stops and those types of things that we can work with to improve our housing around those, those areas. But this bill is very specific for cities and towns that do have transportation and transit nodes. Where they actually have to put together what they call stationary. Where they want to look at each of their transit stations and put together a smaller area. Specific. We don't have that operation.
Is this a countywide bill or is this Ogden Valley specific, Western Weaver specific, what's?
So we have, we have a plan element specific on the valley in the twenty sixteen general plan, so we need to be specific to the Ogden Valley.
So, so the law, the, the new law states, because we have a general plan for this separate area, we have to have, is that what your town is?
Partially, yes, and it affects counties of the first, second, third class, we are accounting to the second class, so. We have a general plan, this element in the general plan is where we would have processed topics. So there's, the state is saying, anybody that has more than five thousand people in town, or if you're accounting to the second class, which is based on population. You have to comply with this if you want to be considered whatsoever regardless of transportation.
So the question is, so, so, so does that mean that we have to have this in Ogden Valley, or does it have to be?
So Western Weaver has their own general plan, they have their own moderate income housing.
Is that the trigger of the general plan, or is it the, the county itself?
Well, it's, we're a county of the second class, and we have general plans for two counties. We don't have a single plan for moderate income housing. We're only reliant to supporting the unincorporated areas, each incorporated city in our town is a single, the first, second, third class. They also have to comply with putting their jurisdiction boundaries on this plan. So I can see that we do this, also our community, as a field, they all, and your general plans have to add this moderate income housing component. Make sure they're complying with the state. In some instances, their requirements are more strict because if they can't have transit. Ogden, so we have their bush rapid transit line, they're putting in, they have to put together more smaller area of permanent specific transit stations. But it, it's a big deal in the state, a lot of, a lot of municipalities and counties are, are scrambling to get these things done, there's not a lot of time to do it. So this is one of those things that come up in our workflows.
So we have to do, so you have to do two, you have to do it for us and for the Western Weaver. And it's because we have two separate general plans, so, correct? And we have to basically accomplish three at a minimum and five at an optimum. Items from our, from our general plan that we created. Is that right? So is there other items we could add to it or is that?
Yeah, and I'll get into the more detail here in the presentation. I wanted to be superficial on the history of this, but I didn't want to come in just, just cold note to say, okay, here's HB four sixty-two and off the gale. There needs to be a little bit of background just to wrap your head around why we're having this discussion. Uh, but now, now we are. We have done some work in twenty nineteen. We've done some reporting in the last couple of years based on those requirements of the twenty nineteen bill. This new twenty twenty-two bill is, is giving us more to do. So we need to take another look at our general plan specifically to our moderate income housing component. Look at our strategies. Are we okay with those strategies? Do we want more strategies? And here's, here's our options. We've got three options. So option one is we can pick or reaffirm the three. Or we have four technically. We chose four. We were only required to have three that we can pick. Or reaffirm those strategies. But then we would have to also adopt an implementation timeline for each of those strategies. Right now, we don't necessarily have a timeline tied to those strategies. And that's option one. Option two is we can pick new strategies from that menu of twenty-three options and add corresponding implementation timeline for those options. Or option three, we can incorporate at least two strategies beyond that base requirement. So at least five, and then also adopting implementation. So what I'd like to do today is just take you through what we have now. What the bill allows us and requires us to do and get some feedback on the strategies. We think we should look at either reaffirming or to.
So since we're looking at just for Ogden Valley, what benefit transportation funding can give us? So if we were to push for, for priority, what do we get?
So that's where my understanding falls a little bit short and engineering helps us out with what exactly do we have projects in the pipeline? Charlie, you might have some idea as far as that long range capital project. And then a list of projects that are categorized that we require the state funding for us to, to satisfy. So it's transportation funding for you.
So it's fair to say like priority on a new road.
So obviously, there's, there's a lot of municipalities saying, hey, we've got all these projects. You know, they, everybody seems to think that project is the most important. But the state is giving us an opportunity if we go through this process to have a priority status. And everybody might go ahead and do this and everybody has priority and I don't know what they do in that situation for all of the top of it, so to speak. But if we don't, if we don't address this and we follow below on that. Priority could be problematic for us to.
Then not only our houses will be in disrepair, but so will our roads.
It's a cycle.
Question, does that include U dot roads or just county roads?
It's U dot roads. So this is, if we don't comply with these requirements, the state will actually send a notice to you that to say these municipalities are not compliant. So when they're looking to select projects from this, they know these and it's not.
On our roundabouts, we need our priorities.
Yeah, honestly, when we get into this, we're not too far off. A lot of our strategies, a lot of the work we've been doing, other projects kind of scratch multiple itches, so to speak. Getting more than one bird with. And so when we get down, I'll, I'll show you what, it's side by side comparison of what we are doing now. What the state is allowing us to do going forward and how we're, we're able to meet those requirements without a terrible amount of effort. Jumped in. So we've got these three options. Leave it as it is and just put some timelines to these or picking strategies and also add some timelines. So bear with me as we go through this. And we've got several slides coming up that are formatted similarly. We have a left side and a right side. So the left side we have the strategy man. That is what this HB four sixty-two allows us to pick from. And on the right is the strategy previously from the twenty nineteen bill. We've changed the strategy slightly between that twenty nineteen and now the twenty twenty-two. And so it's easy, it's nice to have a side by side comparison to see what are we, what are we working with before and what are we now allowed to work with.
Can I ask a question for you about the process of this? So you're bringing this to us? Or our thoughts? And I mean, this is a commissioner decision is that, or what, what is, what is, what is your process with this?
Yeah, you would be giving a recommendation to the county commissioners.
Okay, and this is not like going to be legislated about later or is it or what?
This isn't just.
Now? And we'll have a public hearing.
Tonight it's not. Tonight is just a work session.
And we'll have a, we'll have a noticed public hearing about this.
That's right. So this is a work session. We just wanted to present you just to kind of regurgitate all these facts and materials. Wrap your heads around it. We will have to come back to you in a public hearing.
And for you make. And this has to be pretty fast because it's due in October.
October, so we've got four, three months to work this. We'll have a couple of work sessions.
But the report has to be done in October, meaning so like let's, if we were going to try and do the reach priority, we would have to basically have this done before that. Is that what I'm hearing?
We don't have to solve all these problems today or within the next three months. We just, this is a plan that we are putting into place with some anticipated timelines that we can work on over the next several years. We're just trying to say, what were the strategies we had before? I still like those strategies. I certainly want to have those strategies to track them, those strategies. And then put more specific thought into the timelines to let me think. That's the only thing we have to do. So we are amending the general plan if we change the strategies. We are, we are amending the general plan at the time. So even if we leave the strategies exactly the same, we just add a couple of terms to them. That is still an amendment, so it still requires legislative action. Anybody have any questions about the process or how we're going to get from now to?
So is the total list of strategies available here in the packet?
That's right. Yep. So starting on this page.
What's the total?
No, that, this is. This big pages of current ones that you have chosen in the past.
That's right. So this is the current general plan as it, as it is adopted today. This matrix lists out those strategies, but it also gives an update on where we think we are as far as implementations.
Okay, and the options are keep this, change the timeline. Or two, add to this and get some more. Or three. Maybe, I guess two is pick entirely new, at least three. And option number three is just add to this list.
That's right. So you can actually see those options on page seven.
So you, you can keep, is here now. This plan right now. And then change the timeline. Number two, you can throw this out and pick three, at least three more from the total list that's available and then they're all in the back of this packet.
Right, with the timeline as well.
With the timeline. Or number three option is keep this, but add at least two more. This is the base requirement. You can add two more.
Well, have we met the base? Because it says complete, complete, complete on at least three. So we've met one, right? If we just reaffirm them?
Yes and no. The reason I have to say yes and no is because we have ten implementation strategies that are geared at four menu items from the twenty nineteen. The twenty nineteen bill had twenty-three. We chose four of them, but we wrote them out in ten different strategies to achieve those four. So if you look on the first line of this bigger page, this, this first line, moderate income implementation one point one point two. Develop cluster ordinances that will allow for mixed housing types in compact areas consistent with village area locations on map six. In pursuit of smaller area plans referencing commercial development. So this is one strategy that tried to tackle. So if you guys skip down to page nine of your packet. So page nine of the packet, you'll see in item F on the right hand side. This is one menu item from twenty nineteen that says allow for higher density or moderate income residential development in commercial and mixed use zones, commercial centers. We chose that as a potential strategy. And so in the implementation of that strategy, this top line from the general plan was one implementation. I guess you could say to address the strategy that you chose. But there's more than one of these implementation strategies that tries to tackle. The menu item from the twenty nineteen. So twenty nineteen gave us twenty-three options. We can choose three of those twenty-three. We chose four of them. And to tackle those four, we wrote out ten strategies aimed at tackling those four. So there's a couple in here that serve to address that strategy. You know, this is a lot to wrap your head around. What we're trying to do in this, this page here is to show the ten strategies trying to address the four from the bill. What, where we are in our process to address.
So, so that means that we need to pick, so if we wanted priority, we would need to pick one more.
That's where it's not clear to say, well, if we've already worked real hard in the last three years to solve one of these or to check off one of these listed items, are we off the hook? We have to choose new ones. In addition to, it doesn't necessarily say. So we could leave that strategy in our general plan and say, what we think we've completed it. And our timeline would just say compete or monitor ongoing maintenance, monitoring. There's not much more that we feel like we need to do going forward in our implementation. But we want to keep an eye on it. We want to make sure that we don't have any issues that need to be addressed. And that's where I guess that's up to us. And obviously, we don't have to just stick with three or five. We can do whatever we want and we feel like is best for our community. And bear with me here. Let's go through the pages starting on on page eight of your packet. Let's go talk to bottom. I think your heads will start to wrap around this concept. It was a lot for me to read through all this and say, where are we at now? Where are they asking us to go? What have we done? Have we not? Do we need to do?
So again, I guess that's maybe you can, when, as you do this, tie this progress to date to what you're calling now. That's where I'm, I might be disconnected.
And, and you, you probably take a minute to wrap your head around that.
Quick, I'm confused me. You said you picked four implementations. What, what do we call them? Were they strategies? This list of twenty-three?
Let's stay, yeah, let's keep our terminology the same just for everybody's. So your heads don't explode. Let's call them strategies, okay? So the twenty nineteen bill gave us twenty-three strategies.
Okay, they gave us twenty-three that we could pick from in order to be compliant.
And you picked four.
We could have picked three. We picked four.
Okay, if I look at this wide column, column number three, implementation strategy. You've got numbers by moderate income implementation, one, one, two. Okay, so if we look at all the one, one, two, one, 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 three, four, we should only see four of those strategies listed here.
Yes and no. Let me actually, I'm going to pass out the actual goals as they appear in the general plan so you can see what they look like formatted.
Because you've got about, you've got ten into, ten separate strategies listed here, not just four.
There are multiple strategies built into the different steps to accomplish any one of these.
Did you separate these out? So like, like, right here, it says, just, just using it, says priority two point one. Did you say this is going after strategy three? Like what is that? So is there a way for me to tie line number one or line or priority two point one to each strategy?
Yes, let me, let me have you start with this packet I just handed out, okay? This is directly printed from the general. Okay, so this, this is how these goals and strategies appear in the general plan. This is printed verbatim from the general plan. You'll see, starting at the bottom of this first page, moderate income housing goal number one. Okay, we have one goal for this moderate income housing. It is to support affordable homeownership and rental housing opportunities in Ogden Valley and maintain the quality of existence in the family housing stock. You get one goal. If you look at how it's then broken on, you'll see we've got a principle, principle one point one. And turning to the second page, we've got implementation one point one point one of that principle. Implementation one point one point two, one point one point three of that principle. Okay, so it goes from goal to principle to implementation. Okay, so it's, it's drilling down on this goal. Our goal is very high level. And the principles are a little in detail and the implementation is very specific. And what I've provided to you in this large matrix is just implementation strategies. So we're not talking about the goal of the principles, just implementation. There's ten of them. Those ten were crafted to try to address the four strategies we chose from the twenty nineteen. And so it's not, it's, it's not one implementation for each of the four. There's ten of them to try to get to.
So the way we understand these, the numbering here, if it's one point, one point two, that goes to, that's goal number one.
That's goal number one.
And then.
Principle number one.
And, and the next one listed one point, three point four means that is goal number three.
It's goal number one, principle number three. Implementation.
Well, we have, then these are all goal, just one goal.
You actually have two goal number ones in the general plan?
Maybe, maybe to wrap our heads around this, let's forget about the numbering. Let's forget about how it's a goal, principle and implementation. Let's just focus on what the bills are asking us to do from the twenty-four. Okay, purge your minds of all the numbering, purge your minds of what number corresponds with which strategy. Because it'll take you a while to let it happen. It's, it's not as intuitive as you thought. So let's, if you go back to your packet. Packet, this, this guy, and turn to page number eight. Bear with me as I go through these next couple of pages. And I think that you'll start to wrap your head around what we have been doing and what the state is asking us to do. Everybody on page eight? We've got this up on your screens as well. The left side is what the state is asking us to do in twenty twenty-two. That's me. Right hand side is the twenty nineteen. There's twenty-three of these strategies. They're labeled out in A, B, C, D, E, F, G, W. And what they're, what we're trying to do is a side by side comparison because the strategies have slightly changed from the twenty-two with the twenty nineteen. They've put a box around what we had chosen in twenty nineteen. On the right hand side, have you guys seen item C circled in blue? That indicates what we chose in twenty nineteen. So item C says facilitate the rehabilitation of existing uninhabitable housing stock into moderate income housing. Okay, so how do we, how do we rehabilitate existing uninhabitable stock? We need to work with program or system. That's where the housing authority we saw had that program in place. Let's facilitate, let's, let's enable that. Let's find a way to partner, let's find a way. Let's facilitate, let's, let's enable that. Let's find a way to partner, find a way to support that existing program. We chose that as one of them. Okay, on the left in purple, the state has now changed this to say demonstrate investment in. So you see in the bold letters, that's what they've added now. They don't want us to just try to facilitate some of this loose language. They want us to demonstrate that we have actually invested in this, this topic.
We just have to set a timeline.
That's right, to invest. We have to set a timeline to invest. We have to say, we will put money into this program by 2023. Or by a certain.
Do they have to be, I mean, can it be 2020, 2030?
They didn't say, they didn't say ask to be within five years. It just said, we want a timeline with specific metrics of how you're gonna make that timeline. Right now, the, the funding is not tied on, did you actually achieve? It's.
Just if.
What we foresee happening, as they said, put a plan together in front of the meeting. Now they're saying, put a timeline together for your plan. And we're sure there's gonna be more coming down the line. It's more specific, more funding tied to actual results. What I'm hoping to get out of today's discussion is helping you understand what have we been doing? Would we like to make any changes to it? What are some potential timelines to those changes? So let's change to the next page here. Page number nine. Uh, these ones are fairly similar. Item E on the right in blue, this is again 2019, we selected this one. Says create or allow for and reduce regulations relating to accessory dwelling units and residential zones. We selected this as a strategy and what did we do? We went and adopted the needed orders. So we'll see that our implementation progress will show that we made some progress on this particular strategy. In today, 2022, on the left hand side in purple, the state is now saying create or allow for and reduce regulations related to internal. Or detached accessory dwellings in residential zones. The state had initially said, we need to allow for EDUs at least internally, basement or internally to resist some structure. And now kind of going to, uh, maybe we should do internal and detached as well. So their language as you see in bold is how they're getting a little bit more specific on the strategy. So if you want to keep this strategy, we would have to show that we have reduced regulations for internal.
We've done a lot of work on internal, but not a lot of detached.
We have, actually. So we allow for detached EDUs, but we are slightly strict in that you have to have a second density. Whether they have that detached. It's kind of like the internal by not requiring. So maybe if we want to hone in on this more, maybe we look at that as a potential barrier to say, well, maybe people prefer to have a detached. Maybe we should reduce that TDR requirement. That's something we could do.
But to this point, nobody has passed judgment on. Whether requiring TDR for. Detached ADU makes it reduce regulations.
Right, what's the definition of reducing regulation?
You have less than you started with, and we just added more. But nobody's passed judgment on that. The state has not passed judgment.
On the TDR?
Oh, on whether. What, what we said we'd do is create or allow for. And reduce regulations related to ADUs in residential zones. But we allow for it, but we added additional regulations. We didn't reduce them. That's right. And the state hasn't said that's okay. Okay, but see what I'm getting at, sure. The question is, does the state at some time look at this and say, well, we think you did it? Or, well, we're concerned, we think you increased regulations, you didn't decrease them.
When we submit our report in October, they require a narrative from us, not, not just the numbers of it all. They require a narrative that we explain what we have and have not done in our application. And we can explain. We previously allowed for, we called them accessory apartments at the time. We, we did allow for those. When we put in the EDU ordinance, we continued to allow for the internal apartment. We also allowed for detached, uh, there's a little caveat with that detached where I had a TDR associated or protection density right association.
We, we just made it tougher for low income people to get one of those, because we made it more expensive to build them.
But we did allow it.
We also made it harder, because we made it.
Yeah, we're just making it tougher. We're not making it easier, like it sounds the state wants us to do.
So the state will look at our narrative to say, well, I think you guys made some progress, but that may still be a barrier to entry. And we address that in future legislation to say, you can't use TDRs as a component. They'll look at these things and say, whether we agree that they're making progress or not. Take our reports to say, well, what other future legislation may be necessary. It's in there, it's a strategy, but the efficiency of that as a, as an implementation strategy, I don't know if it's that efficient.
So we would look at this and say, uh, maybe we better pick something else, because we think we're at risk here, because we've made it tougher, not easier.
But, but we can, but we can also look at this. You can look at it from the other lens and say, we have, we have created for. So we can look at it both ways.
It is still young. I mean, it's only a year and a half or so old, and we need to get some traction out of it.
And we're judged not on that exactly to, for the end game. So now they've created, so since they created it as an incentive. We're not really judged on, on that, right? That's not part of the criteria. We're just judged on whether we built a plan. Tried to follow it, which we have proof that we've done in some, in a lot of cases, and have a timeline inside, right?
So far. I mean, that may be future legislation, so you guys put a timeline in and didn't follow any of the timelines and make any steps. Future is, okay, we can't show you made measurable impact, then we're not gonna consider you for funding. It's speculation, maybe who knows with the legislature.
So I'm looking at this last thing you handed out.
Yep.
And it says moderate income housing goal. So typically, a strategy is, how do you achieve the goal? What?
So the goal's the big aspiration.
What process do you use to achieve the goal? The goal is support affordable homeownership and rental housing opportunities in Ogden Valley. So it's hard to argue that you. Support affordable rental housing opportunities in Ogden Valley, if you just made it more expensive to rent.
That's a valid argument, sure.
Okay.
And that's why we need to take this retrospective look to say, well, we had this strategy. Is it working? Do we agree that it's a good strategy going forward? We want to keep enforcing or making progress on this strategy. Or do we want to choose something different?
And I suppose because. Beginning here says, you're required to do this for cities and towns and near resorts.
Where are you looking?
2019.
Yeah, somewhere I read that.
One of our, one of our strategies is to cluster development near resort centers and village centers as a potential way of reducing the cost. The, the state does not have any implementation strategy that focuses on resorts.
So we can look at this a couple of ways. We could look at this as, hey, modern income housing is a big concern for us in our area. We want to take this and. Do more. We can look at this as, we're okay with how things are. We want to get the transportation funding and do it as, do it to the bare minimum. Like, we can either do, like you say, option one, or we can even go as far as option three, and.
You can totally do strategies, add timelines to them. We can totally revamp.
Yeah, and even just do like the minimum to get what we want, because we're happy with how it is, or we can do the maximum and get. The funding and really kind of make it a, a focus. Or we can just say, hey, we're pretty well happy with where we're at. We got the strategies. We're good with the funding we've got.
That, that's our, that's our option. We have those three options. It's up to us to, to determine. Again, it's a recommendation to the county commissioners here. It's a, it's a modification to our general plan. We just need to wrap our heads around, what are the strategies now? Are they working? What are the options for strategies if we want to make a change?
So we want to think about this until, when, when, in between now and when it comes again, right, is the idea.
Yeah, you're welcome to take a look. I mean, I'm trying to help you guys see where we at now. What could we be at if we chose to change anything? The list of strategies, if you look at them side by side, like these graphs are showing you B through. W, I think it is. What, uh, that we selected, okay, we select based on tools. Bear with me just a minute more, as we go through the side by side, I think you'll, you'll start to see. How we, our strategies in the general plan try to tackle many of the options in the menu. But they still boil down to those four critical strategies we had mentioned before. Let's go to. Page 10. So K and L on the right hand side in blue. Udoi Strategies of Preserve Subsidizes Low to Moderate Income Units on a Long Term Basis. And then L, Preserve Existing Moderate Income Houses. Those two strategies sound an awful lot like the one we had just read before about rehab, rehabilitating uninhabitable space. Those three sta- strategies are very similar, where it's basically, let's preserve what we have. It's not let any of our housing stock fall into disrepair. Let's try to keep those on, on the market as available units at a lower rate. So even though the state said these are three separate strategies, we decided to just group them into one and say, let's just protect our housing stock. Let's protect what we have. Let's partner with the housing authority. We already have a program, please. Let's see if we can release people we have, before we start talking about building. That was one of the options here. If you go to page 11. Sorry, two more. Page 12. You'll see on the right, we've got P, Q, R, S, and T. On the left, we have a. The state grouped all of these into a single strategy. So before it was, hey, let's, let's have you partner or apply with other entities to try to make a partnership to create some traction. On the left hand side, and oh, it just kind of brings it all together to say, hey. Find ways to apply or partner with entities that are working in this space. Whether it's a housing authority, whether it's a. Nonprofit of some sort, to try to pull your resources and maybe get a project offering that's satisfying, satisfies a model. The strategy is they work with all the entities that live in their sphere. Make sense?
Hey, so. I've heard staff talk about the idea before that. There were only real lower moderate income housing rental stock is in the lower value. None in the upper value.
There is some.
So hold on, hold on. We're talking about houses that we know that are rentable. Yes, I guess, we don't know that, right? We don't really know. I mean, it was pretty clear, we don't know what the short term rentals are out there. Okay, so the short terminals aren't tracked by the census, but the long term ones. Are, but that's an extrapolation, right? It's, it's basically based on what they get back. It's not really. So from a property tax standpoint, if I have a second home and I'm renting it out full time, do I get second home? Or first home status, primary residence status? So that translates into higher rental. Is that, I mean, is that a program we could look at as a strategy? Well, I mean, if I have to pay higher property taxes, significantly higher, I mean, this can translate into a thousand bucks a month. And just that excess pretty easily up in the valley. But if we're looking at strategies on how we could reduce, make things more affordable, right, that's the angle. And one way we could do that is by saying is, if you're having a long term rental, you don't have to pay second home.
Like if you have a business license.
You know what I'm saying?
Have, have a second property, but it can show you that.
Is that a strategy?
Could be, yeah. And Charlie, I need you to speak in the microphone. Are you? Are you sure that that's the case? I'm under the impression that a, like a yearly, yearly rental, if, if, that is. Not, that is primary residence for some family. Therefore, that dwelling qualifies for.
As a primary dwelling.
As a primary dwelling.
That's where it gets in tax law. We'd have to do some homework to see, is this even a strategy that could be explored?
That is my understanding as well, is that if, if somebody is renting a unit and using it as their primary dwelling, that is taxed as a primary residence. So that's already the case.
Yeah. Yeah, let's make it a goal. Yeah, let's do it.
Well, you could look at options to maybe reduce the tax rate for the property that's proven to be. If it's out of the law.
See, that's the issue with SDRs, because that's a business like a hotel. It's not a primary dwelling. The long term rental is.
I don't want to create any more brain damage on this side by side business here. What I'm trying to show is, there's, there's 23 strategies, both from the 2019. 2022, they've been revised to be a little bit more specific. It's not as fluffy anymore. It's. More specific now. How is this strategy gonna come to fruition? Demonstrate that you've actually funded it. Demonstrate that you've actually got a project online. You kind of see that language as you go through the strategies, because in 2019 was. If you get a, you know, a strategy, collaborate with so and so. Develop the partnership. Now it's a little more specific, so if we're gonna have the strategy. Needs to help, can come to fruition with a timeline and steps that can actually be taken to do it to fruition.
2019 is the last day that you have. Countywide area median income.
It's actually based on 2017 ACS data.
Because I'm looking here, it says 2019.
That's right. But it used 2017 data to extrapolate. So the census in 2020 was taken. We all know that was at the height of the pandemic, and who knows how reliable those numbers are. Following with that census, we had an awful lot of housing. Imprecendent housing changes as far as market values are concerned. We have immigration, all sorts of weird stuff going on too. We don't know that we have a good data set to show current conditions. We know the conditions are probably worse. Rapid rise in housing prices, coupled with inflation, coupled with, you know, incomes are keeping up with those two.
So this is telling us, we had to have, at least in 2019 or 2017, we had to have rentals available. we had to have rentals available at 1,100 a month or less. There's probably nothing up there. And that's one reason I was excited about this employee housing thing, that they could have a little apartment that could be less than 1,100 a month. Now we've made additional housing available for this lower income, median income type folks. But if it's a house or an ADU where you gotta have a TDR, it's not going to happen.
Raises that bar pretty quick. So if you look in these strategies, what you're talking about, Commissioner Burton, where we are looking at more specifically, let's make sure their development, they have a requirement for, for their workforce housing. That's actually a strategy that we can select. We call that. Can you remind me what we decided?
I think we recommended eliminating powder map. Nordic Valley to 20 or less.
We put a cap.
Put a cap.
It wasn't, it was, I guess it was some one of them. Now, the idea behind it wasn't that we would give extra density, just that we would cap it.
I think it was a balance thing that there is a great benefit of having people living at their workplace and not having to commute through the canyon every single day.
That's right. In the original, the original name. Grid or something.
I think they wanted, wanted 5% or something.
They, they already planned to build about 20, just to satisfy some internal demand. What, what we had kind of discussed in the recommendation on that is that we allow them 5% of the entitlements to be free towards their modern, as well their, their employee housing. So the, whatever their entitlements end up, ends up being somewhere between 400 and 500 or so units. 5% of those, they can build without dipping into their pocket of entitlements is what we said, but no more than.
And we, we didn't require them to do the transfer. That was the big incentive, which is like, you don't have to do it for those.
So it was, it was a bonus density or an incentive, so to speak.
And I, and I think the reason for that is, I think Charlie pointed out, these things don't pay for themselves. It's small. You, you just can't. If you put a TDR in there, you gotta pay for that thing. Now you can use your TDR to sell a $500,000 condo or an apartment that doesn't make any money. What are you going to do? Now we don't have any employee housing.
And you gotta recoup that. If you had to pay for the development, then you have to somehow recoup that.
And you're not doing it at less than 1,100 a month.
Okay.
So if you look on page 10, one of the state strategies that is available to us this year is item J. So on page 10 of your packet, item J says, implement zoning incentives for moderate income units in the units. So we could say for any development that is coming in, you need to provide at least 10% of your units and below or eight is an incentive with more than 1,000. 8% of that. That's, that's something you're required to do later if you get entitled to the project. Or we could do something like a fee and lieu, which is something we're exploring. Say you're only building two homes, how do you get, if you need, if one of them is moderate income housing, 50% of your development is moderate income. Looking at a fee and lieu potentially as a way for developer to pay a little bit of that into a pot that can develop.
So we can look at that. So like, like you said, Jay, implement zoning incentives for moderate income units in new developments. We could come up with a strategy that says like, okay, if you're over 100 units and you do one, we have some kind of bone, some kind of, maybe not bonus, but incentive, right? I don't know that I like the idea of a bonus, but I like some incentives. I'm not sure how we do something.
With the employee housing, it is an incentive because it's, otherwise there wouldn't be it.
I guess, I guess my thoughts are I would prefer to do it where we don't give the bonus density, but we have an incentive some other way. I don't know what that would be.
So we could reduce some of the permitting fees. We could reduce the.
There would, that might be.
There are a couple of things we can try to reduce that, that all the costs that the developer ends up paying. Bonus density is one, the other misses that we add value.
My take, my thoughts on that is if we, if, when we, when we look at it, some of the thoughts in the, in the general plan and what people want is no more density. We want to, we, we have a lot. Let's like, let's manage what we've got. And that's the whole idea between transferable development, right? I think we should push for something that says, we're not really going to do bonus. You know, I mean, I guess we did it in the one zone. Maybe we even, we just look at another avenue in the future. That's my thoughts. How does everybody else kind of feel about that?
I think that the word density has got two meanings when you talk about it. What we're really talking about is impact. How do we lessen impact? We go, oh, we just have less people. Well, okay, now employees got to drive the canyon. We didn't reduce the impact. We made these people go out and drive the cane. So how do we reduce impact so that density? Density is contributes to impact. But if it's done wisely, it doesn't have to contribute to impact.
I, I would love to be able to get the value, maybe this idea, it's the, this, that people make. It's just a strong man. The real issue is, is that, what the real issue is, sorry, this is a terrible mic, just correct when you get into it. What the real issue is that the creation of people, right? The creation of density creates an impact on roads, upon grocery store, not people in the grocery store, the amount of people recreating. There are ways to offset the. We just do that in a way that really qualifies as a tier. For example, one idea that we have, that the community has, is hide it, that it's, right? Hide it. So if we know we've got 15,000 dwellings that are eventually going to happen on the battlefield, well, let's put them all in the village area. Visually. So how do we offset the street? Find new ways to do that. But that, you hit the nail on the head. That's why transportation fronts are tied in. Because if you put your housing, especially at higher densities, higher densities means more supply. More supply means lower cost. If you do that along major transportation corridors, then the impact of, on transportation in neighborhoods. Because you are planning your bike capacity transportation borders to sustain that kind of growth. And you have less people traveling through these neighborhood residential streets because they're tied directly into so right down to.
So, like, if we could, I mean, even if we could keep it at 15,000, right? Because you're right, yes, if we can hide it, that's great. But if we could even keep it to 15, you know, if we could, if we could go below it, which is what we've been trying to do anyway, that's better. So if I, if, if I can make a recommendation, when we do, when we look at this, like this particular one, maybe we come up with some way, and I, I don't know what it is, but maybe it's something along the lines of, you know, for example, the, the Nordic one. Okay, so in that scenario, like, okay, you can, you can do moderate income, you can do these employee housing. Instead of giving you bonus density, we're going to say you can now transfer it from somewhere else that you had, that we wouldn't have allowed before, you know, something along those lines that says, hey, granted, you know, we, we don't want more density. We don't want to give you bonus, but we want to do something that makes it feasible to do this. I would encourage us to look at whatever those are. I don't know. I don't know exactly what there are, but if there's something, let's look at those instead.
Yeah, and as, as we build the TDR program, which is on, that's next to discussion. That's something that certainly, if we're going to be restricting where TDRs can come from to this, in the transfer, this for the purpose of creating. We decided this, that we all, we all understand this. Market's going to go. So we could say, all right, you're moving from there to here for a moderate income housing. You can't leave it. Somebody needs to manage that month to make sure that that stays. Housing authorities more than happy to take on more work. They, they consider it accomplishments. They would like to own properties that can, they can flip for moderate income housing. They're happy to run annual and maybe even semi-annual reviews of renters' income to verify that they still are at that. So yeah, there are certainly ways that we build in less regulation. Overall, think about the market, supply, demand. Just by saying creators, that alone constrains your supply. If you're constraining your supply, and it's increasing, it's really hard to do anything affordable unless somebody else, not the people who can't afford it, but somebody else is paying the difference of what these people can tax. A tax to bring in that, to something like that difference or impact. Or what do we talk about? A fee and lieu. Somehow that difference to offset the way that the market works. Yeah, that's totally balanced.
See, with that employee housing, the employer is paying that extra that the employee can't pay. He, he's putting, he's putting this little apartment in there. And he's taking a loss on what he could be making from this space. But he's lessening impact. For example, we, we get hung up on this density and this number. And we say, I don't know where the commercial thing came in the valley, but no commercial has got to be over in Eden in this little tiny place. Okay, so if you want a loaf of bread and you live up in Boligots or Norfolk, you gotta get in your car and have an impact driving over to get your loaf of bread. Where as if we said that this idea of mixed use, okay, in various areas where the market will support it, a guy can live upstairs and have his little neighborhood, tiny convenience store, whatever. So all those people don't have to drive clear to Eden on the roads. So that's, that's an example of lessening impact while not necessarily lessening density.
That's the reason why Europe developed the way that it did because they didn't have cars. They had to be able to walk to their services and their homes. In the US, places spread the reality, especially after the war.
Not going to change that. So let, let the little services be where the people need them. Don't make them impact the road and all the neighborhoods.
That's one of the strategies that came into the bill. The strategy, strategies is focusing your attention on mixed-use areas and providing to.
Because we cannot change the law of supply and demand as it relates to cost.
Not unless we figure out a way to make everyone.
But I want to put something out there. If everybody agrees. I think I've been doing this chair thing for six months now and close to it, and every night has been over 8:30. So we're going to get out of here at least by eight. If everybody's all right with that. Does everybody agree? I mean, I, if we can do sooner, I just want, I'm so tired of being the guy that pushes us 8:30 every night. So to be clear, like, not to cut anybody off, but we're going to try and get out of here at eight.
Commissioners, with that in mind, what I would propose is that we come back to you with these strategies that staff would like to recommend to you as the strategies as we move forward here. You guys are welcome to look through these strategies and give us comments. We can send us some emails. Say, hey, I'd prefer we go down this path. Let us know. But what we can do is we can put together a list of strategies the same. This is what we propose going forward. And how it differs from what we have. Work session for anticipate we do one more work session.
So just so we understand, we are required in Ogden Valley to have this moderate income housing.
Based on our classification with the state.
Okay, so we just have to do it. We have to figure out how do we get the cost down?
But we, we only have to get a timeline done. We already have at least three. We just have to say, yes, I mean, if we don't even get it done, you guys are going to say, hey, we have these three and here's our timelines, more or less. So I mean, that's what's going to happen.
Maybe it would be nice if our strategies actually have the rubber hit the road and make some progress on this.
How much do we have to have? Is there a percentage?
Of progress?
Or just one unit accounts for the whole thing? Or do we have to have a percentage of the people up there?
Oh, as far as what we need to, to account for, there's not a, there's not a stipulation to say you have to provide for 30% of your fam, your households out of the road. It doesn't, it's not. We have to report our numbers to say we know there are X number of households that need to be served, who are underserved. And so we do a gap analysis and that's part of the reporting to the state. But the state requirements don't say you have to provide housing for 30%, 100% of those households out of the road.
The important thing with this is we don't want to ignore this because each year the state is coming in with more stringent requirements because affordable housing is a key thing with the legislature. And so we want to make sure that we're addressing this and we're doing our part on learning. Because next year, you're probably going to tighten things up even more. So that's why we want to make sure we're a team player with this. So we ought to have strategies that will actually provide moderate income housing. Yeah, we're not just filling squares. At some point, they're going to say, put up or here's your transportation funding is gone.
I think that's great, but I, from, I think we should absolutely do that, right? And I'm, but I also think we should be able to get this done to the priority.
And we've done tons already, like staff has mentioned. So, you know, I think, you know, by what we've done already, we've checked a lot of the boxes. We just got to make sure you guys are in board with it. Great.
I mean, I want to, I want to get it right, but I also think, hey, for at least this main course, let's like, make sure that we, we don't just scrap the, you know, scrap what we've been doing and start fresh. Let's, let's use that and then add, and just at least for this year, and then we can revisit it. Because I'm sure it's going to change, right?
So I'm not at all worried about meeting this priority status based on the strategies before us, the work we've done today. Home-based village zoning, some of the areas that we're working on. I think that.
I mean, the community should want that. I mean, the goal is not just to get the funding. The goal is to actually make it happen. It's both, right? I mean, it's, it's, the, the funding's good for everybody, right? It's good. And then also we've already started doing this, so we should, for both. I mean, I, I don't know why we wouldn't.
So, and 1.41, point one, the fourth line down on the big sheet. About STRs, robust and innovative enforcement mechanism. Because I've got the impression if these illegal STRs disappear, there's going to be a whole bunch of housing stock out there and rents are going to come down.
Just saying.
Okay, if you look at the fourth line down.
If you do what?
It's, it's going to make a whole bunch of.
If you do what?
If you enforce STRs and all these illegal STRs where they're getting, I don't know, 500,000 a night, all of a sudden they can't get it anymore. Well, now we got more supply for regular long-term rentals. And that's going to be end up huge in reducing rents for long-term rentals.
And as we were shown, we are, we're making progress there. We, we all have a list that shows that we're working on that. We're not, we're not letting you slide. I, I would ask the community, if we can continue to ask them to help us achieve that goal.
Mr. Chairman, making progress. Has a few different. Has a few different, a few different ways. Are we putting the goals in place or the plans in place or the agents in place to make progress versus? So I wanted to hit. Oh, there's my. I wanted to hit Commissioner Montgomery's comment on how much. Oh, how much is fair? Probably not fair to ask the Ogden Valley to sustain the same amount of moderate income housing as Ogden City, right? For a variety of reasons, the population's going to get higher in Ogden City, but it's also an economic hub. So they've got a lot of services that are available for lower income people. Again, moderate income is not low income. It's moderate. So we're talking about middle-class America here, or maybe the lower middle-class America. And so how much should the Ogden Valley? Well, that's why the state says do a gap analysis. How many people in your community who are in your community currently cannot afford the rent or the mortgage that they have on their, on their property? Are, are they at thirty percent or more of the value of the property, the, sorry, the mortgage, monthly mortgage rate of the property? So say you bought your house twenty years ago, a pretty good deal, and now it's ten times more expensive than it was when you bought it. Could you afford to rebuy that house today? So if no, then you might be one of those people in that category. So now you've got, so we've got a, a, a demand. These are the amount of people who are at eighty percent moderate income housing. These are the folks who need to have this kind of housing. So now we know where the gap is. The demand is, the gap is, or what our supply is. And so we can start measuring that decrease, that gap. So again, because the Ogden Valley is what it is, you're probably not going to see a lot, a huge amount of folks under that, that eighty percent. But they're there. So we find a place to. So you can look at, at that way. The other way to look at it also is are folks not living in the valley currently, but maybe working? Working seasonally or otherwise, teachers, police officers, folks who are definitely at that threshold or below. And if that's the case, maybe we need to add those into that gap as well because they're not there now because they can't. So gap analysis and then finding ways to measure the reduction in that gap over time. That's where I think Scott's right. With the states incrementally progressing in their, in their regulation is requiring the county slowly, or will be requiring the county slowly, show that that gap is decreasing. The gap in the Ogden Valley, as much effort as we put into this over time, has only increased. In fact, I think it increased significantly.
Couldn't one of our strategies be to ask the state to quit marketing Utah to death? They're to ask, keep asking us to do that while they, they're out there with the champion marketing campaigns that have been tremendously successful, which is kind of sad.
So to clarify my comments, I want to make sure, I think we should continue with the progress we've made and maybe pick new ones. This is kind of what I'm saying so that we can do it. That's what I'd like to see.
I see that there's low hanging fruit. We've already kind of started working on through other efforts where we can just add to our, our strategies because we've already started working on them anyways. So I'm not too concerned about me. Not just trying to meet the minimum, let's try to find a way to make. Any other questions or comments? We'll come back next meeting and chat a little bit more about this. Feel free to email me with any suggestions you might have as to look for those strategies.
Thank you.
Rural Development Rights Overlay Zone.
Yeah, we've got, we did this with ADUs not too long ago.
Tell me if you can't hear me because all I can hear is the echo from the room. Okay.
I don't know that we can hear you.
Really?
Like, can, can you hear him?
Can you hear me through the speakers? You need the ability to turn your speakers up a little bit. That might be one of the problems. Things here I wanted to address. I want to, speaking of incremental progression, continue to make incremental progression on the transferable development rights front. So tonight, rather than talking about broad policy considerations, for example, rather than talking about sending and receiving areas or both sending and receiving areas where how that is going to be written. Work on geography with the guys. Let's just have a look at geography. I mean, ultimately, the geography may turn into sending and receiving areas. But let's kind of work to that. In the Ogden Valley, so the very first thing I wanted to touch on is whether or not we got the valley floor boundary correct. So the red outline, what you see here basically is the outline providing the general plan of what the valley floor is. As I got looking at this outline and realizing that there's some areas, at least on the benches, that I would still consider the valley floor and that are very developed. And so if our goal is to target, for example, lands that are fuchsia areas that we don't want seed development on, or we'd like to encourage development to move away from. Maybe that area should still be inside of that valley, that polygon. So that's the red polygon you see here. I've got on this, most of the river streams and lakes, I need to sketch them a little bit darker, but I'll show you where those are. That'll kind of help us identify whether or not our polygons are correct in what our desired protection areas are versus what are desired, what, what the others. So we've got essentially, let's just call it protection areas, areas that we want to protect from density. Maybe after that, about the policy side of things, maybe that's through encouraging the movement of density rates, maybe it's by requiring movement of density rates. Maybe it's by allowing density rates to move back in later on. That'll all be a discussion for later. This is, this discussion is about what's important, what lands are important to us to see less development on. What lands are important to us or less important where we could see them. And so that, that's why I brought up rain, river streams and lakes, just looking at riparian corridors, sensitive wildlife pools. To, as a possibility of us to try and preserve people. And then the big orange area, obviously on the eastern side, that is a critical. Wildlife migratory area that the state has set up. In fact, the state has newer polygons, trying to get that from there. Slightly modified to show, I think this is predominantly for elk migration, but there are other migratory animals that use this. So kind of an idea, do we want to keep developing out of these migration rates? Kind of interesting how the migration area tends to kind of go around development instead of going through Wolf Creek, for example, it goes around. It makes sense that that happens. There can't go through people's backyard. They've got business. Whereas less development, it got easy access to the lake. Zoom in on this. This is not as easy to, to control with a laptop. So let's kind of start up and, and look at the, the red polygon. Let's just start from. So as you can see, I've got a lot of streets outlined. I don't have all the streets outlined yet. Again, this is a different progress. Got a lot of streets outlined. We're up here. See what development is up here on the north side. Uh, yeah, so you got Derby Creek up in here, a few other developments. Would you consider any of that area up in the Derby Creek as part of the valley? Would you say that's outside of the valley?
Better question is, are we talking about transfer from or transfer to?
So we're just kind of talking about what happens inside of the valley floor as opposed to what that, what that decision is transferred from to. The general plan says that on the valley floor, you should be looking at transfer. It says transfer out of the valley floor to the resort areas or the mountain land areas that where you can't see that development. So that's one of the things it says. And then inside of the valley floor, it says transfer. Priority transfer, receiving areas are the buildings, right? So in, in a, in a perfect world, all the development moves from valley floor, whatever that definition is. From the valley floor into those, right? As priority, but secondary, it talks about areas that are more suitable for development. So for example, areas within proximity to existence, streets, infrastructure, services, et cetera. If it's more suitable for development, that should be a receiving area for areas less suitable for development, areas that don't have roads. That would be.
So I think I would take that would be considered the valley floor up here in Derby.
I wouldn't.
You'd say not valley.
We kind of got to see where national forest starts because.
The question that we're asking then, based on general plan, is since the general plan is telling us that we want to see things transferred out, off the valley floor and into places we can't see them. So in that, so looking at it from that purview, we're saying that, no, this is an area we want to transfer things to.
Right. But on the other hand, areas that are, what was the term you used? Are appropriate for development. So there again.
I see which, okay. Sorry, take a couple steps back. If we were to draw the entire Ogden Valley, I mean, here, we would put a polygon around the valley floor. Polygon around, I don't know, polygon around snow basin, maybe a few other polygons. We would say that hinterland area, snow basin, I don't know, move as much as well. Between that area and the valley floor, plan kind of says, this is a no matter. We're not talking about transfers. We don't want to be able to move development to that bench or whatever, mountainside that you could see. We don't want to see cuts. So we want to move development to them. But in contrast, if development is allowed to occur there, one meter every forty acres, we don't want to see that move down. Better see that one in every forty acres of mountainside than to see all that actual state. Does that make sense? Clear enough?
I think you cause create confusion when you use the term valley floor. Valley floor is flat and it's, you can't get lower. That's the valley floor. You start going up into Wolf Creek. From a ge geographic thing, that's not a valley floor. It's got great development up there, but it's not valley floor. As at least I understand that term.
We're just talking about what do we define as the general valley area versus Powder Mountain, Snow Basin, Mint Wolf Creek, I guess, too, but.
Yeah, well, Wolf Creek would be probably inside the valley. I would consider it inside the valley.
Agreed.
Not valley floor. Yeah. What is the valley? Where do you want to see movement and transfer of the development rights to?
But that's, that's what we're trying to find is we've got, the plan is telling us that we want to move it out of the floor or the general area to mountainous areas above, right? So what is that is what you're trying to define. And I would say that would be that this would include it. And so what areas that are more or less tied where I can look from, you know, kind of any main road that sees it and see that development and not up where I can't see it pretty much.
Can I type something in? Also, you used, I, I think it was suitable. And I think that needs to be really clearly defined and flushed out. For instance, fire, we, we know the fire interface areas and then critical, critical watershed. All drains down to Pineview Reservoir and our Deep Aquifers and supplies all of the Wasatch Front in our, our county with, with water. And we have to be really careful when we're want to transfer to make it or to hide it. So many of, so much of these areas, especially towards Powder Mountain, on top of the mountain is not a suitable place. And it's actually even with all the bike trails, the new ones are tearing up and the traffic and the pollutants and the more holes they keep. You know, it's not suitable. So I think that needs to be fleshed out a lot better before we start doing this.
The hard part with that is suitable is, is debatable.
Not with science. I, I, and there again, maybe you can mitigate some things, but to, it's, this is very well recognized years and years and decades of science on what's suitable, what's not, and how watersheds are impacted. So I bring it up. I'm not an, you know, an expert and I can't explain it in a way that makes you guys understand that. But the science is out there.
So that's where we would, that we would differ in the definition of suitable because you could say that building a home on the top of a mountain is not suitable because we don't have electrical power. Well, that might not be suitable for, for you.
Talking about health, safety and welfare.
Well, electrical can be considered health, safety and welfare.
Air hazard and whatever. So.
You can also clear the land. So it's really definable by what is suitable is really difficult to define. It's not an easy cut and dry.
And that's why I said it needs to be really fleshed out.
So again, policy consideration, right? Very broad policy consideration. I would tend to agree the top mountain isn't as suitable as the valley floor. I mean, terrain alone is challenging. I kind of got a little bit of a chuckle out of the advertising for Powder Mountain that they are. Going to be nationally acclaimed for preserving nature. They're doing the exact opposite of the future by developing. But so are we. It's just.
Well, that's hard to say, too. You can have a development and maybe not Powder Mountain, but they, they come and plant two hundred trees when there was only ten there before. I mean, so how do we know that that's not? Yeah, is it, is it so, so are, you know, it's, it's hard to say. I can't, I can't tell you that, you know, so you said that it's not good to live on top of the mountain. But what if I don't like the temperatures at the bottom of the mountain, you know, and it's not good for me to be in the hot heat, but it's better for me to be in the cooler, higher air? I mean, it's hard to say. I, I, I can't define that for people. And that's the hard part.
But we're talking about, I mean, like I said last time, when we moved up here forty-two years ago. Now we get backwards what it is. You can't build on the valley floor. You got to build on the mountains. And then it was, no, you can't build on the mountains. We don't want to look at it. You got to build on the valley floor. And now it's flipped back to, we don't want to build on the valley floor. We got to build on the mountains. And now we're talking about, whoa, wait a minute, we don't want to build on these foothills over there because we, so that's always going to go back and forth.
That's right. I just need to continue to do that over the next coming decades.
If you get into suitable, that implies that you can reasonably. If you get into suitable, that implies that you can reasonably put a dwelling on this land. It's not too steep, it's not unstable soils. It's not in a recharge area. It's whatever, that, that makes it suitable. And what is suitable? You look up, well, there's whole Wolf Creek area, that's up on foothills. And it works just fine. So if it's suitable there, find me a foothill like Wolf Creek, that'll be suitable there. That's suitable.
That's what is difficult because you've got homes on the top of mountains where people have paid to put in drainage systems, roads, trees, everything that are miles up there.
So they mitigated the impacts. Okay, so why do we need to sit here and eliminate the possibility of mitigating impacts?
Sure, sure, and we certainly would want to look at. Really, what we're looking at is creating broad policy. What is the transfer, what is not a transfer? Where should transfer be? From, come from, where should it come to? Required by state code, you're going to have TBR program, you have to have sending areas and you have to have receiving. State code doesn't say that your areas of sending cannot also be receiving. And so there's some overlap there, we have a lot of discretion.
So back to our discussion about let the market control and quit trying to define it because you're going to be wrong as soon as you get in the weeds.
I appreciate that. So as we look at the, kind of the more sloped areas on, that surround the valley, we know that we're going to see eventually, long-term, hundred years, thousands of now, suppose we're also here. Development, because we can only go so. So we'll probably see some expansion. Now here, fortunately, on the western side, so long as the United States of America controls that. And I agree with you, we do see where the state and federal lands are. It's a lot less likely, it's literally an act of Congress to allow for development to occur in these areas. Doesn't mean it's impossible. We're holding, got that done. An act of Congress to allow him to develop his resort base and the base of the. It's a matter of, we know, sometimes that's connections that are tied. So let me ask you this, when we're looking at the sloped areas just right in here, the right to develop it is there. Most of it's one unit for forty acres, some of it's one unit for five acres. Right to develop it is there. Do we want to see the possibility in that area for that to be reduced, that development potential to be reduced? And if so, we should say that's going to be inside of our sending area. Or an area sending or receiving. Conversely, as you think about this right now, maybe this area is good for the receiving. And if you like to see this as a receiving area, then we need to wrap the polygon around that as well. Right now, just looking at the inside of this polygon, should sending or receiving occur here? Later on, we'll ask which ones are sending and which ones are receiving.
I think it should include the, the whole, the currently developed areas.
All currently developed areas, so where the roads are extended, I, that's easy for me to meet.
That's my, I mean, where, that's where we could, where we're talking about. That's why, that's why I would.
Up here in Derby Creek, we already got some development and if you have the opportunity to split one of those lots and could that be allowed? Should that be? I think I heard from Commissioner Francis, no, this isn't a great area, we've got wildland to protect up in this area, it's kind of mountains.
Skies.
Dark skies, definitely dark skies, that's impactful.
Dark sky would mitigate with lighting.
Sure.
So, so, so the mitigation, when I get the, as we talk about conditional uses, hey, if it's something can be mitigated, then why not allow? You identify the hazard, you mitigate it, it's gone.
Great, I appreciate that. Sorry, I'm trying to get through this rather fast because we're at eight o'clock right now. And so maybe we're only going to get this section of land adjusted.
It's pretty hard to say, put the line here with the information we have on the map.
Okay, what other information?
Well, slopes.
So the slopes are the shaded areas?
Well, if, if you can't reasonably put a dwelling upon a sixty-degree slope, then, okay, that's probably not going to be a receiving area.
Okay, so sixty.
Or it's not going to be suitable for development. Because that's what you said, it's not valley floor, it's not fat, flat, but it can sure be a Wolf Creek. Okay, then it ought to be something.
So that's something I can work with, sixty percent slope forward?
So I, I just threw that out, but I don't know.
So from, from my, the one perspective of transfer development from, not to, because two's another argument, right? We've got Wolf Creek that's like, hey, we might want to transfer it here, it's already kind of part of our city center, Eden's the same thing. Right, certain areas are already designed or planned in the general plan as a place to. But like, from the currently developed, I mean, already roads, already there, I think is a no-brainer to say, yeah, we want to try and get development rights out of these areas.
Out of the currently developed areas.
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's good to hear. So I hear from Commissioner Francis, this is, this is, I guess this is a broader policy consideration, but we're not talking necessarily about sending and receiving. I hear from Commissioner Francis that in Derby Creek, we definitely don't want to send. I think I hear from you, you, Mr. Chairman, in Derby Creek, we probably shouldn't be sending either, for example.
But I'm saying like, like, yeah, this area here where there's houses and things built there, if people want to transfer rights from there and not build there and go up, I don't know why we would say no.
So let me ask you this question. Should you be able to transfer? You've already got lots of all the wall blocks.
That's a, that's a tougher question.
But I already know your, the answer to the first question, I, I'm going to bring the red line to go up and swallow that area.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not saying we should say, okay, now we can transfer everywhere within this because that's not what the general plan really says. But I am saying that, hey, yeah, that should be able to say, no, we don't want you, like, yeah, you can sell your right to somewhere else that is defined.
Okay, so. But I, I can. Just broadly ask you guys this, what about transferring to? Asking the question again because I want to hear from you guys as, as well as you guys. Should you be able to transfer to this? That'll help me register in my mind what your guys' policy position is. And I'll go redraw the boundaries based on what I see. Some slopes, when it's developed, there's roads that access all of it. That's in my mind, probably suitable for development. So you've got the scientific side of suitable for development, then you have the policy side of suitable for development. So I'm asking you guys from a policy perspective. Slopes, the bench, whatever else is there in Derby Creek, wildlife, could you see it as a, as a receiving area? It's already has roads, it's already developed, so.
I would say receiving, but it would help to put property lines because this right here is showing a big area.
I'm avoiding property lines because when you get down to that granular basis and you want to make some potentially big changes, hopefully with this is add land use rights. And so I just, once you get to a parcel by parcel basis, we get a little bit.
A lot of this is scary though, but this orange is public.
Right, so I will add public land, public land polygon to this, so you can see that, I already know what that shape looks like, it just. So you will be able to see that. The green areas, let's just, for example.
My answer to that is it depends. If you want an answer, it's like, well, it depends, right? Somewhere within this area, I mean, are we talking about having an accessory dwelling unit for one? Or are we talking about, hey, I want to buy up thirty and put them all in this one spot that wasn't ever planned, wasn't ever part of the like general idea of the, the area? You know, I don't want to leave the door open to say, hey, this, yes, this area is allowed to receive for, for just however many want to go out by. I want to, I want to be like, hey, like, well, we're not, it's not like, no, but it's maybe. You know, that's, that's the only way I see is a yes, but like Wolf Creek is like, well, that's already defined, right? So is Eden and so is Nordic as, that they're in this map, it's already defined as a place that we would want to send those. So, you know, when we start expanding this map out, we have to kind of look at it in the same way, I would think. Not, not in terms of like where within there you can send it to, I think you can say, hey, you can take it from, but not send to.
And that is the overall goal. It's to create a polygon where all the sending and receiving areas are inside of, and it's losers are inside of. And then inside that polygon, this is something, this is something. I've already kind of started laying this out, so you can see, and I'll get you guys this map in your emails, so you can study it a little bit more. Again, it's just a preliminary map, but I'm also thinking about Commissioner Burton's comments. If we let the private market regulate, where can you send from, where can you receive to? By just keeping the options open.
The landowners figure out what they want to do with their land. I have a suggestion on when you talk about general policy considerations. The more subjective they become, the more fraught they are with dangers, the slippery slopes. If they're objective, objective standards are applied, then they'll stand up to scrutiny. If they're just arbitrary, subjective judgments, you get to do this and you get to do that. Well, what do you base that on? Well, it just seemed like it worked right.
That's exactly right, so as we write.
Then a bunch of lawsuits are going to come out of it. And a bunch of changes are going to come and it's not going to be a more permanent thing, which I think you're trying to achieve.
That's exactly right, I appreciate that. So when we write this, if we do have, for example, some subjectivity in our policy desire, but we know maybe here, but maybe not here, when we write that code, we have to say exactly what. That takes the subjectivity out, even though the creation of the policy was a little subjective. Because winners and losers, that's what land use law is, period. And I hate that, that it's like that. I hate that we have to have a society that's like that, but it is what it is, winners and losers. So on that subjective side, who is, who are the winners, who are the losers? How are we going to define what that is?
Well, health, safety and welfare is the standard we have to meet, I think. Okay? And that's objective. That's more objective.
Scientific, exactly.
Yeah, as soon as you get into subjective, well, we think this ought to be pink instead of orange.
I see what you're saying.
Okay, somebody's going to say, well, what do you base that on? Well, it just seems like a good thing.
That's, oh, you're exactly right, that is.
Now it ends up in court because somebody's saying you took away my rights without an objective basis to do it, health, safety and welfare.
There's a, yeah, there's a possibility for that to happen. When it gets to court, what, what will happen in the court is it will be determined whether or not the commission, so again, this is policy consideration, the county commission has to make a final decision whether or not the commission had legitimate public interest in this. And in the state of Utah, in fact, I'm not aware of any state, that, that legislative discretion has been. So there was a case that I think it was a where a coastal commissioner or something like that created a policy that wasn't there. So as long as you're not out of the constitution, state regulations, the constitution, any policy that we make, do those things, and that's a, they don't have to speak to that.
So why would we infidelity with all the landowners, the citizens up here? Why would we subjectively impose upon them the consequences of our arbitrary whims?
I don't have an answer for you on that.
I, I don't think.
We've got a lot of planning, a lot of zoning, we've got general plans, we've already worked with the public, we have public hearings. I mean, beyond that, which I know you already know, process, beyond that, I don't, I don't have an answer for you. I think what you're looking for is more broad policy consideration, policy perspective.
Stay, stay out of the weeds.
Right, stay out of the weeds.
Let, let the individual landowners get in the weeds.
Yep.
On how their property should be.
I think that's.
Is, is good policy.
Okay, well, we're late. So do you need anything else specific?
No, I'm going to take the non-answers that I got. And I'm going to create a different polygon that I think better suits what I thought.
What resources do we have that we could call on to make them not so subjective? Subjective as far as a critical and sensitive land?
Well, so I want to distance just a little bit from the idea that it has to be a representative. From a public stance, as represented by public hearings and by finally decided on by the county commission. They get to make that final decision, it's all part of being part of a republic. They get to make that as the representative of the government. Once they've made that decision, it is a general decision. So if through this process, through the public hearings, county commission consideration, and the commission final adoption, if we say that mountainside is beautiful because we all think it's beautiful, all of us, it's subjective. It's all painted the same exact system. Doesn't matter, because the county commission says that's the one, that's beautiful. Right, and so we can go into the science and look into the science, but I would encourage us to look at what the valley considers. Does that make sense?
No.
Sound.
So we're going to be looking at wildland, we're going to, or wildfire area, we're going to be looking at rippery areas, for sure. Because we want to, we want to protect the environment. But at the end of the day, when you're asking, what do we want to be, what does this community want to be when it grows up? Or gets older, whatever. That's not a decision that science can answer.
I think it's in its old age already, but that's just me.
Once it's more seasoned than it is, that's not a question that science can answer. That's a question that public discourse through this same process. So, okay, I'll add to the map, state land, state and federal land, wildland urban interface. Oh, water, protect water. That one's going to be hard.
The whole hill over there is a prime watershed.
We also have UGS data and UGS shape files for sensitive plants. And I can have our GIS team create a slope analysis that I advise, all slopes over a certain percentage. I heard sixty, I know, you're just throwing it out.
I, I threw that out arbitrarily. It's not based on anything, because I know there are places with very steep slopes that with proper mitigation can be very successful.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of that.
I wouldn't want to.
Stilt's on the side of a cliff.
I, I wouldn't want to eliminate that.
And our current ordinance, if you just do traditional development patterns, it doesn't. Find a flat land, put your house on it, have your steepness be in the background. So the density points that come out of that are still there. So if we were to take it off the hillside and say, everything over sixty percent of that number is, can't be killed. Then somebody loses the motivation to sell the development instead.
See, see, as I think about it, and I think of places I've traveled where there are very, very steep hillsides.
Where on the coast of California?
Beautiful homes and they're successful. Why eliminate them? So if you can mitigate hazards in getting your land use permit and your building permit, then you ought to be able to be there.
So including transferable developments.
I'm not talking about development rights, I'm just talking about, you want a, you want a polygon drawn around places where development could take place? And as I think about it, it ought to be a real big polygon. Certainly not public lands.
Right. That helps me understand how the ground is. As you look at this, I didn't really follow any kind of slope or topography. Just tried to follow existing something to some extent. I'll try a little bit harder to focus on topography. Because defining this boundary, like, we the hardest little task that we have.
So don't define it, don't define it.
And we can always talk about it, that's certainly an option. If we can say everywhere is a sending area and everywhere is a receiving.
My final ten seconds. Government exists to enhance the exercise of individual property rights, not to restrict or diminish them.
Does that mean our tax dollars don't have to help pay for flooding and fire reparations and and pollution mitigation? So there is an impact that ends up costing us a lot of money because the government has to come in and clean it up after.
You're talking about New Orleans, right?
Which, if you go to New Orleans now, you see a lot of houses on stilts. Really interesting, they're still there in the world. Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
Appreciate it.
Let's, let's, do we need a motion to, excuse, do I have a second? Got a second from Commissioner Burton, all in favor?
Aye.